Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular media council. It is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. And welcome to the folks in our, in our audience, which is lovely to have tonight. We've got quite a busy agenda, a whole bunch of presentations, and of course, we have our new open forum. And I think I saw someone, possibly Yvonne. Yes, signing up. So we have our first open forum participant, which is kind of exciting because we just started this a couple meetings ago. Anyway, I digress. I'll start with our traditional landing knowledge. The town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is traditional and treaty territory of Inishnaabik people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Bozle First Nation, Rama First Nation, and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. Town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homeland of the Maiti, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community indigenous people. I now like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in orderly fashion, proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main doors, those double glass ones there, make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit right back here. And up the stairs, check the door for heat for opening, and if it's safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right and proceed out the doors in front of you, or just follow us. Washrooms are located on our second floor and elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone exhibiting violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Members of the audience are to maintain order and quiet, not to address council except with the permission of the chair. And of course, with our new open forum section, all cell phones and pagers, good reminder, are to be set. And other electronic devices which emit a sound are to be turned off or set to non-audible. No person shall display signs or placards, applaud participants, shoot confetti cannons, et cetera, and debate, or engage in conversational electronic otherwise and behave in a way that may disrupt the proceedings of council. Party when acquiring a hearing assist device, please advise the clerk and she will arrange with our IT staff to provide you with one. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and posted to the town's YouTube site. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53, one meeting per month, and live stream via Rogers TV Midland, which can be accessed through the town of Midland website. Individual recording, broadcasting, or streaming the meetings by the public or any member is not permitted without express consent to the clerk on those present, for the exception of our media friend in the back corner. In disguise. So with that, I'd like to just ask everyone to join me in a moment of silent reflection. I don't often share what I'm reflecting about, but tonight I'll be thinking about the people for those of you who care. I will thinking about the people in Jamaica. We have members of our staff who have family members in Jamaica, which has been devastated by the hurricane. Anyway, you're free to think about whatever you'd like before our meeting. I just wanted to share that our, my thoughts at least are with our staff and their family members abroad. Thank you. So we have our section 2.1 of our agenda, open forum. Open forum provides a two-minute opportunity for the public to speak on an item on our regular council agenda. Details include regarding the open forum can be found under section 9.5A of the town's procedure by law 2022-2. Individuals assigned the open forum registry, which I believe is on the podium, with the clerk prior to being permitted to speak to council and must agree to the following terms set out in the town's procedure by law. They're not difficult. Open forum shall last no longer than 10 minutes in total. As a general practice, the length of time each individual has to address council should be no longer than two minutes. Or, and at the discretion of the mayor or chair. So I've set up my little timer and you'll hear duck quacking when it's two minutes have gone by. If you use the whole two minutes, anyway, you hear the duck, that's what it is. So I believe we have at least one person signed up, so please approach the podium, press the button to turn on the light, introduce yourself, and we're all ears.
Good evening, Mayor Gordon and members of council. I'm here to ask that Midland adopt it adopt a tax relief by law under section 365 of the municipal act 2011, 2001, to help low-income seniors struggling with rising property taxes. Report, the tonight's report CSR 2025-113 projects a 5.18% blended tax rate increase for 2026. For many seniors on fixed pensions, that means taxes rising faster than income. For example, the 2025 levy increase adds about $5.42 per month for every 100,000 of assessment, roughly $192 more per year on a $300,000 home. For a senior household earning $25,000 to $30,000, that's quite significant. One of Mayor Gordon's top campaign promises was to control our spending, so the town's spending. Yet since taking office, taxes have climbed every year. 2.5% in 2021 is what the tax rate was. And in 2022, when the new council came on board, it increased to 3.6%. And it's continued toward, it's continued upward each year since. This trend contradicts commitment to the fiscal restraint and responsible budgeting. Other Ontario municipalities such as Peterborough County, Clarrington, Mississauga, Burlington, and Markham already use section 365 to provide modest, targeted relief to seniors and persons with disabilities. These programs are fully within municipal authority, affordable and administratively feasible. Section 365 allows to reduce or cancel taxes that have become unduly burdensome. It's a responsible tool to help those most in need, but only if council chooses to act. I'm asking council to, number one, direct finance staff to provide data before the next draft budget, including five-year trend of average and, sorry, residential tax bills for seniors by property value, a median income for 65-plus households to estimate tax burden, three-to-five-year levy projections, and eligibility cost and impact of relief options. Number two, bring forward a section 365 bylaw for 2026 piloting $500 to $1,000 relief per eligible senior with review after one or two years. Nearly one in three Midland residents is over 65. This is about fairness, compassion, and fiscal balance, helping seniors to stay in their homes while maintaining responsible governance. Please act now to ensure this relief is considered in the next budget cycle, making Midland a leader in both compassion and good fiscal management. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. But the ducks quacked, but I didn't want to, you were, you were, you were making good progress, so. Not a problem. Thank you. Anybody else signed up? Anybody feeling moved or inspired? Okay, well, there we go. We have our first one. Thank you very much. And yeah, sorry, Yvonne, you didn't, you forgot to introduce yourself. Or did you? Sorry. We know who you are, but just for the record.
Yes, I'm Yvonne Teetz.
Thank you, Yvonne. All right, council, any declarations of conflict of interest in relation to tonight's agenda? Counsel Patel.
Thank you, worship. So I'm declaring conflict of interest on CSR 2025-101. And report CSR 2025-104. Thank you.
Thank you. And the clerks being duly notified, or you gotta believe both of those are received information, but nonetheless, when the time comes, just feel free to not participate then. Council approval of the agenda moved by Counsel Patel, seconded by Counsel Reese, that the contents of the regular council meeting agenda for November 5th, 2025 be approved. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next move by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Ball, that the items and related recommendations contained within the November 5th, 2025 consent agenda, as consent items having been considered by council be adopted, the exception of the following three items that will be pulled. Item 5.4.3 CSR 2025-102 Parking Study Project Final Report. Item 5.4.4 CSR 2025-106 Waterfront Master Plan Draft One Release. And item 5.4.7 CSR 2025-109 Notice of Intent to Designate Eight Historic Properties Recommendation Report, which will be considered under section 12 Reports and Other Items Withdrawn from Consent Agenda for Council's Consideration, including presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Council, as usual, if there's any question, comment, call out on anything that's about to be passed in the consent agenda, now was the time. Counsel Ball.
Thank you. I just had a question about the surplus land. I know. See, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. I had a question about 5.4.8, the surplus land, why that wasn't considered that we turn that into parking?
Did you hear that? So no problem. A little sidebar, please go again.
Why we weren't considering to turn those surplus land into parking spots?
Through your worship, considering parking for, for what, like for, for visitor parking? That wasn't contemplated when we looked at it. If that is something that councils should choose for us to investigate, we can, but the staff wouldn't at this time. We haven't looked at it to see if it's necessary or not, or if there's a need for additional on-street parking in that subdivision.
All right, mate. Yeah, we're going through Counsel Ball. So that was a previous road connection for phase two of the subdivision back with the original design. And simply what they did is they shifted the connection to the east or west, right? So it was essentially a one-for-one. So it wasn't like we're giving up property that we never had before. It's, uh, there's a road connection where it needs to be. So it was a realignment of that, something that has been in the works for, for many years, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so now it can be bonus parking, right? I've had some residents already think that that's what it's going to be, and we're disappointed to see this.
So procedurally, we could on the fly pull that report and then refer it back to staff for consideration, other than the recommendation, which right now is just to transfer those slivers to the property owner, so. It would just mean an amendment to this motion that I just read, I would assume, Madam Clerk. Raise your hands. It, first of all, Counsel Ball, would that would be, is that something you like to do, or are you just more calling it out, but you're content to go ahead with the plan?
Thank you, worship. I think if council's agreeing to the recommendation that's on the report, then perhaps you could bring a notice of motion for that separate item that you want to discuss.
But at that point, we wouldn't own it. The reason why I had the question is if I thought that that would have been contemplated, so I was wondering. I was hoping for a response as to why we are not going to turn it into parking. I'd so if we approve it to go forward, that means we wouldn't own it. We would be putting it back to them. Now that I know that we haven't looked at that, that would be nice, considering I proposed something about parking later on already.
Through your mayor Gordon, Counsel Ball, I just pulled it up quickly and measured it. It's not wide enough for parking. It's only a six-meter wide laneway. So at best, you're going to get three to four parallel spots with a dead end in and no way to turn around. So if, I don't see a way that it's going to work for parking.
Okay, that was what I was thinking you were going to say, so thank you for looking at it. Too bad.
All right, Counsel Merediths.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. My understanding on, on these two parcels of land is when the developing, development's going on, that is a roadway to get to the to, from one side to the, to the next side. And it, it would be brought back and to council at this stage and basically given back to those property owners. So basically, you're severing the, you're making the plan, the subdivision plan with a roadway in future, knowing that this surplus land is going to go back to, is that? Is that not how I'm reading this?
Through your mayor Gordon, Counsel Merediths. No, you typically wouldn't have this. What happened here was the developer did a red line change, we call it, and they changed the lot layout. And originally, phase two, I believe, is before my time at the town, but I believe it was to be like a condo development, narrower roads, all private, and they, and all off of the backside. So all of those townhomes that are fronting on Bayport Boulevard there were previously supposed to be accessed on the backside. And they came in, they redlined their design for their phase one A, they called it. And they started, they, those fronted on Bayport. Then that led to a future change to be municipal roads, phase two, and the new roads were done, and that's what, how we ended up with this minor parcel difference. So you typically wouldn't, in a subdivision, have this type of thing go on. Everything at the time of subdivision agreement and original registration would transfer to who it has to go to for the permanent, and then things wouldn't normally go back and forth.
Okay, thank you. And then reading in the report, so it would go back to the budding property owners on this parcel of land. And then in the report, they would be subject to some, some fees if they wanted this parcel of land. Is that, is that what I read? Or do they just kind of say, hey, you, you get a little bit, you know, extra chunk of land? Or if they choose to, to take the property or not, I believe that was in the report. So they, they could basically, can the landowners opt out of receiving this land? And if they do, that the town would just assume it?
Yeah, so through your worship, the, the, they would be responsible for the land transfer checks. So we would offer it to them. If they didn't want it, then it would just, it would stay within the municipality's ownership.
More grass to cut. Yay. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I just wanted to point out that in our council information packages of October 14th to the 17th, township of Amara supported our Midland Speed Camera motion. Not that it did us any good, but they did, someone did pick up on it, and I thought that was good. As well, the St. Paul's Church invited us to a lifelong learning experience, which I attended. And they had a speaker there regarding the unhoused and drug addiction concerns. And there was a good dialogue there that evening.
Just while you're, I'll go back to Counsel Ball with just while we're talking speed cameras. It's not on the agenda, but you kind of worked it into it. So just for those following along, we expect royal assent from the province on their new bill that will effectively repeal their own rule on November 14th. So people are wondering what's happening. Don't expect to see a guy climbing up on the pole and screwing the cameras that day, but they'll be flipped off. So, you know, clearly, we're going to follow the laws and there'll be new signage erected. I think there's giant-sized school zone signs that need to be erected. We're waiting on that to arrive from the province and, you know, the slush fund that's being announced. Haven't seen any invite yet to leverage that, but when it does, we will be one of the first people to apply. But on the speed cameras, they are still alive and running. I heard this morning on our local radio station, one of the on-air hosts was the recipient of a 14-over ticket, I believe. At any rate, so these are still alive until they're technically illegal, which we believe is going to be November 14th, at which point the, the switch at New Market for our two cameras will be turned off. So just anyone wondering or curious about that, that's what we know so far. And we'll have a fulsome report in December wrapping up the program. You know, unless it's challenged and, you know, there's some kind of state of the, to the change from a, from a legal challenge, we're not launching one. But we'll have a wrapper report in December that'll talk about the number of speeders and the fines collected and the cost of the system and what money, if any, is in the, the bank for us to use for traffic calming. So anyway, just tying that back, because it is something that we still find a lot of engagement online about. So thank you for bringing up for speed cameras, and it is nice and in our municipality, saw fit to endorse our, our request of the province to consider alterations rather than, you know, termination. Counsel Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about the tourism, but first I want to ask a question about the October 31st, the bylaw. Stats, number of calls. I'm just wondering if that also includes the service at midland.ca emails? Or are we including those in the calls? Yes, I'm seeing nods.
Yeah, through the chair, those, the, the calls for service are everything that we get regardless of how they come in. So through the service Midland, or sorry, e-service, phone, email, in-person, all, all is included. It's all through the service request system through citywide.
Perfect. That's what I thought, but I didn't want to assume, so. I just wanted to praise the tourism package here for Mural Fest. I thought that, that new event that's been growing has been really good, and the idea to bring it towards Mural Fest and tugboat fest together, that was a good idea, and I'm hoping to see us work with more third-party events this year that have reached out and are continuing to reach out. So I know Karen's not here, but I thought she deserved some praise for the new event that was here, and it did really well. We pulled it. Okay, we'll talk about it then. Already did it, ahead of the game.
Well, no problem. Stay tuned, because there's even another festival planned that'll be in the budget, so. Anybody else? Or recall the question? All right, moving right along then. So does everyone remember what? We're just approving the consent agenda. All those in favor? All those in favor approving the consent agenda? Any opposed? It's carried. All right, next move by Counsel Meredith, seconded by Counsel Ball, that council resolve into committee of the whole. All those in favor? Any of the whole? Any opposed? Carried. Passing the baton.
Okay, moving along at number seven, CSR-2025-105 Official Plan Amendment Public Meeting Report. File number OPA-02-25, OPA-8, for the address of 659 and 681 Bomb Beach Road and 9050 County Road 93. So I'll now call this public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held pursuant to, to the section 22 of the Planning Act to consider the official plan amendment for the property located at 659 and 681 Bomb Beach Road and 9050 County Road 93. In accordance with the Planning Act, a person that does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or does not make a written submission before the bylaw is passed or an approval is given, will not be entitled to appeal the decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal and may not be added as a party to a hearing on the, on an appeal to the tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. The purpose of this public meeting is to present the proposed official plan amendment and to receive comments from the public. Council is not making a decision on the application or taking a position. Council will debate the merits of the application following the receipt of the staff recommendation report to be presented at a future council meeting. If you wish to be advised as to when the recommendation report will be put before council, or if you wish to be notified about council's decision, please contact the planning services department at planning@midland.ca by no later than December 19th, 2025. I now like to call upon Zoe Beemish, our planner, to introduce the application and confirm the notice of public meeting has been issued as prescribed by the Planning Act.
Good evening, Chair and Council. I am Zoe, planner with the town of Midland, Midland Planning Services Department. I can confirm that the notice of public meeting has been issued in accordance with the Planning Act. As confirmed by the chair, the purpose of this public meeting is to gather feedback from members of the public about the proposed official plan amendment. As this is a privately initiated application, the role of staff is limited to providing a basic overview of the application. The applicant's agent, being Greg Barker from Innovative Planning Solutions, will provide more details in their presentation. Staff can confirm that the property is located at 659 and 681 Bomb Beach Road and 9050 County Road 93 on the south side of Bomb Beach Road and west of County Road 93, and is designated mixed-use corridor and natural heritage on Schedule C of the town's official plan. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the majority of the lands from the natural heritage designation to the neighborhood district and mixed-use district designations. Additionally, the application seeks relief from the requirement for a secondary plan to be in place before development proceeds as a portion of the property is within the County Road 93 secondary plan area. The purpose of these amendments is to facilitate future residential and mixed-use development on the subject lands. Please note that the current application seeks policy approvals only and no development concept have, has been provided at this time. The applicant has submitted several reports and studies in support of the proposed official plan amendment. Staff will review these reports, along with any comments provided tonight, and provide a planning opinion by way of a recommendation report that will be presented to council at a later date. Staff wish to remind the public that if they want to be notified when the recommendation report is presented to council, or if they wish to receive a copy of the notice of decision, they must contact the planning department by email at planning@midland.ca. Thank you, Chair. That is all for my presentation this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Beemish. I will now invite the applicant's agent, Ray Bud Warman. I hope I said that correctly, to provide a presentation on the proposed official plan amendment.
Good evening, Chair, and good evening, committee, staff, members of the public, and thank you, Ms. Beemish, for that present, or that overview. I am not Ray. My name is Greg Barker, but that's okay. Ray was scheduled, and I butchered that name myself. So no worries there. I'm a partner with Innovative Planning Solutions. I'm here tonight representing the owners of the subject lands known as 659 and 681. I know it says 683, 681 Bomb Beach Road and 9050 Highway 93 for the proposed official plan amendment application. I do have a brief presentation to provide, but as Ms. Beemish alluded to, the purpose of this application is to establish a planning policy framework to facilitate future development applications for further consideration by the town. The subject site consists of three properties, has a total area of 1.75 hectares with frontage on Bomb Beach and County Road 93 to the east. The site is primarily vacant and wooded. There's two buildings located on the property. One at 659 Bomb Beach Road, that's a commercial establishment, as well as a single detached dwelling located at 9050 Highway 93, which is on the right-hand side of the, the property outlined in red. And additionally, the topography of the site, it generally falls down from the northwest to the southeast with the steeper area closer to County Road 93. The next slide, please. Thank you. The surrounding area includes a mix of commercial, low-density residential, and vacant rural lands, as shown on this slide. The range of commercial amenities at County Road 93 and Bomb Beach Road, which is about 800 meters to the east of the subject lands, is quite extensive. It includes grocery, restaurants, retail, automotive, fitness, and more. There are also nearby municipally-owned lands zoned as Highway Commercial HC-H. Those are located immediately to the north. And to the west, there is an MZO request that has been submitted and, and heard by council as well. And overall, it's, it's our belief that this surrounding context supports the establishment of additional mixed-use and residential uses, which would be complementary of, as well as supportive of these existing nearby uses. Next slide, please. So there's a few amendments to your official plan, particularly to three schedules, as well as an exemption or relief, rather, for the requirement for the secondary plan. So I will review these, schedule A, B, and C, and the following three slides will, will show, will show this. The first relates to schedule A. This is your growth area schedule. And we are proposing to remove portions of the Greenland designation and into a combination of settlement area, strategic growth areas one, and strategic growth areas two. And so the image on the left is, is the current schedule, and the image on the right is the proposal. And so what you'll see is, is particularly along 93 and Bomb Beach is generally a rounding out of some of those Greenland areas, creating more straight lines of the strategic growth areas designation. And then the area in white, that is proposed to be of the strategic growth areas designation. And then the area in white, that is proposed to be moved into the settlement area designation on on this schedule. Next slide, please. So the second amendment, this relates to schedule B. This is your urban structure. And we're proposing, similar to the previous slide, we're proposing to designate portions of the lands as neighborhood and mixed-use while also maintaining portions as Greenland as well as the existing mixed-use. So again, on the left is existing, the existing schedule on the right is the proposed schedule. And so along Bomb Beach and ninety-three, you'll see that sort of darker purple color. Those are the areas we're proposing to bring into the mixed-use and rounding out or squaring off the development areas along those road frontages. And then the area in yellow is the proposed neighborhood designation. Next slide, please. And then consistent with the previous two slides, this third one relates to schedule C, land use designations. So again, we're proposing to redesignate lands with a cohesive pattern of land uses. This would include neighborhood residential, natural heritage and mixed-use districts. So again, left side existing, right side proposed. And you may feel like there's some deja vu that these all look the same. They are very similar. But again, just following the the schedules that are within your existing plan, we're sort of matching up with with the designations we're proposing. And and also, as as mentioned, we are requesting an exemption from being subject to the secondary plan to facilitate this development application and potential future development applications if if approved. Next slide, please. And so the amendments are proposed based on this conceptual block plan. As planning staff have identified, there isn't a more refined and detailed concept plan at this stage that would come at a future stage if if this policy framework is established. But this does provide a preliminary design and an idea of the vision and potential development features. So this design, it includes a potential road network with possible road connections to the north both through the municipality's lands as well as to the west. And those lands, as we know or aware, have are are subject to a proposed M Z O. And we've just sort of identified a potential future access. It could shift up, down, left, right, what have you. The idea would be to coordinate with that developer at, you know, if if plans come to fruition to to ensure a cohesive and consistent road network. The plan identifies the mixed-use high-density lands along Bomb Beach Road as well as ninety-three with the lower-density uses internal to the site, including a potential park area as well as stormwater management lands. And then the the concept also retains some natural heritage lands along the northern boundary and then also sort of swooping in in behind those lands fronting onto ninety-three. Combined and assuming densities of a hundred units per hectare for the high-density areas and fifty units per hectare in the medium-density lands, the approximate and potential unit count at this stage would be would be around eight hundred and ninety-five units. And we recognize that this conceptual yield requires further analysis. It will need to be refined through future development process and subject to further council consideration and approvals, including a potential zoning bylaw amendment application or Z B A. If if this application is successful and establishes the policy framework we are seeking. Next slide, please. So speaking of zoning, this is an excerpt from your existing zoning bylaw map. And it illustrates the existing as-of-right zoning for the property, which is primarily rural, that R U zone. And then along Bomb Beach, we have those properties with the H C or highway commercial zone. And again, if this O P A is approved, a zoning bylaw amendment application would be submitted to the municipality and presented for consideration. Another meeting such very similar to this would be held as well. And and again, it's at that time where we would anticipate a more refined plan in terms of unit types, yields, densities, road patterns, layouts to be established and presented. Next slide, please. So from a policy perspective, we've we've considered the existing planning policy framework when we are considering the application. And it's our assessment that this development, it seeks to facilitate growth within a primary settlement area in the form of compatible commercial and residential uses that will contribute to the mix of housing types and densities while also making efficient use of existing and upgraded infrastructure in the area. The develops, the development also considers natural heritage features and would seek to implement mitigation strategies to ensure no negative impact to those features. Next slide, please. Again, as as Ms. Beamish alluded to, a number of studies have been submitted. These studies are shown here on on this slide. These studies were identified as being required through pre-consultation with planning staff over the years, submitted with the application, support of the proposal and and determined to be required for a complete application for for application review. And next slide, please. So in terms of sort of where we are and and next steps in in the overall development process, I want to reiterate again that this application for the proposed official plan amendment is the first step in in a long process, which would include, if approved, if this application's approved, additional applications subject to additional public meetings and consultation and consideration. And these potential future steps, this is sort of just the highlights. There's lots of work that happens in between each of these bullets, including the refinement of plans, more technical study and analysis. But it would include zoning application, draft plan a subdivision. And if council approves those of those applications, we would move towards fulfilling conditions and subdivision registration. Next slide, please. So in summary, Madam Chair and members of council, the proposed official plan amendment seeks to establish a planning policy framework to support strategic growth within the town, intends to make efficient use of recently improved and existing infrastructure within a primary settlement area, provides opportunities for a range of housing densities in a location close to day-to-day amenities and thereby contributing to a more complete community. An approval of the amendment will facilitate submission of future planning act applications for consideration. And it is through the preparation of the submission materials that it is my opinion the application conforms to or is consistent with applicable planning policy and represents good planning. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions or comments, I'd be pleased to respond. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Barker. I'll now open the meeting to comments from the public. If you wish to make a comment, please take step up to the podium and state your name and address for the public record. You will have a maximum of five minutes to speak. Okay, I don't see anybody heading to the podium, so there's no comments from the public. Does council have any questions for clarification? Okay, so there are no further comments from the public or any or from our council regarding the official plan amendment. I will now call this public meeting to an end. Okay, could I get a mover and a seconder for this, the motion that's that staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-five dash one oh five official plan amendment, public meeting report, file number O P A dash zero two dash two five, addressed six fifty-nine and six eighty-one Bomb Beach Road and nine zero five zero County Road ninety-three dated November fifth, twenty twenty-five be received for information. Councillor Major and Councillor McDonald. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, so moving on to number eight presentations, we don't have any. Nine Integrity Commissioner Recommendation Report, we don't have any. Ten Deputations and Petitions. Ten point one Warm and Cozy Children's Charity, Ms. Phyllis Stanley to present to council.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Gordon, members of council. Thank you very much for permitting me to come this evening to give you a wee update. And for those of you who know me or don't know me, my name is Phyllis Stanley and I'm the founder and CEO of Warm and Cozy Children's Charity. We are now into, believe it or believe it not, our nineteenth year of operation. I just don't know where the years have gone. And I have to say, to be honest, I'm glad I have those eighteen years prior to this one to prepare me for this year. And the poverty is abysmal and we are doing well under the circumstances. We started all those years ago with one child at the village school. In order to update you, I do need to go back a wee bit to give you a wee bit of history. So that's what I'll do. We started all those years ago with one child out of the village school of Victoria Harbour. And I would go to the multicultural centre every Saturday at an open mic for two hours. So I'd sing two or three hourly songs and have a bit of a blether with them and explain, pass the hat, and that's where we started. And I would go and speak at the churches, at the community clubs, et cetera, and bit by bit raise a wee bit of money where we could increase the numbers of children. We primarily have always worked through the school systems. And right now we are on to our eighteenth school along with Rosewood Women and Children's Shelter from that one little village school all those years ago. So it was a very gradual creep and for the first few years it was the village school of Victoria Harbour. Then as we were able to bring in more funding, we brought in Wabashin's little school. After that, then it was Port McNichol and a few years later, then they went on to the one big roof of Tay Shores. So then we went to, oh, we included the little Catholic school in Victoria Harbour, of course, then on to Midland and several schools in Midland, then Pennington, out to Honey Harbour and over to La Fontaine. And then the big secondary school, Georgian Bay District Secondary School, where we clothed at least four hundred of the teenagers there. So that's who we are and our goal has always been the same. Our goal is to help every single child to feel equal to their peers. This is very important. This is the most beautiful place as far as I'm concerned, the most amazing country. And it's just wonderful. Here I am as a woman, able to stand and speak without the fear of being stoned. You know, it's amazing, the beauty all around us and yet with the history, there are issues and there've been problems. So there's a generational huge need and the children, a lot of children grow up in poverty through through no fault of their own and have issues to deal with, which are not easy. Believe it or believe it not, a lot of these children we help have actually no identity. They will never ask for help simply because they do not feel they are worthy. That's hard to believe. It's actually true. I've had four or five teenagers in the last few years say to me, but I don't, I don't have, I I'm I'm not real. And I would say, what do you mean you're not real? Well, I'm just a vapor and I fade into the walls as I walk the school halls. How would you like to hear that? That's how they feel. So what we do is very important. What we do is we give them a foundation. How do we do that? Well, if you'd like to open your wee envelope, councillors, you have an envelope like this. Have you got the envelope? I gave, can you please give the councillors the envelope, please? Thank you. If you would just open your envelope to the picture, I would appreciate that. Now, this is picture. It was actually a black and white photograph taken in nineteen forty-six. And it was taken of a little boy in England after the Second World War. This is true. It was not a staged photograph of any kind. If you look at the child, his wee shoes are all ripped, the soles are off the shoes and he's, you know, he's sort of tattered and torn. London was badly bombed and things were not good. Now I'd like you to look at his face and look at that smile. That smile is a treasure. That smile, you couldn't put a price on. Right? Can't put a price on that. Can you see the smile? Can you see the smile, that that wee child? Well, when I look at that child, it almost makes me cry because I can relate to that. I spoke to a gentleman right here in town several years ago who was that child, not this boy, but another boy just like that. And this wee boy has had a dream, just like the other boy, of one day owning his own pair of brown leather shoes. And when I talked to the other chap, he was raised in a barn. He was one of six children. They had no shoes. They didn't go to school. And one time when he was eleven, a local farmer took him to a store and said, you can buy one thing. And he purchased the brown leather shoes. When he talked to me, his eyes closed as he held his hands up and he lifted the invisible shoes up to smell the leather. And the tears were streaming down his face and mine as well at the time. And he looked at me and said these words. He said, Phyllis, those shoes saved my life. He said, I escaped and I went to the city and I became a drug dealer. I became very streetwise. And when I was seventeen, I did a bad drug deal and the bikers put a hit out on me. So he said, I decided to take my own life and I was just about to stick that needle into my body when all of a sudden that one memory, all those years before, when I was eleven years of age, flowed right into my whole being. It was so powerful. I just grabbed my stuff and I got out of dodge. I got a job sweeping floors in a woodmill and I ended up being the manager of the woodmill. Still couldn't read or write. So I taught myself from the dictionary and the phone book. And he said, then I started teaching people to read and write at night. And he said to me, was he sobbing? We're both sobbing at this point. He said, don't ever stop doing what you're doing. That farmer never knew that he saved my life. Never knew that he saved. One random act of kindness, trust me, can save a life. It doesn't have to cost money. It can be holding a door for somebody, doing a kind deed, looking for opportunities. Well, that smile is what I want in all our children because that smile gave my friend, that boy, that foundation stone. So why we buy new clothes? And I've had several people say to me over the years, well, you just get secondhand. I mean, they're just as screwed. Well, we were raised in secondhand clothing. There's not a thing wrong with that. But we were all the same in Ireland. Everybody was the same. I was born after the war and that was grand. But things are different here. And, you know, clothes matter when they're not wearing a uniform. Matters what's labels on your shirt or not. And matters if you've got shoes on your feet or your feet are bare. Oh, yes, things matter. And we want our children to be looking up. We want them to have, first of all, an identity. That stone, that foundation gives them that identity. They can then step out and they can make paving stones. Those paving stones are caused by little things like when they're young, going out to play in the playground or as if they're teens, joining groups that school might put on different things that they would have. or as if they're teens, joining groups that school might put on, different things that they would have. And I can tell you truthfully, after eighteen years, the children we help, over a thousand of them, are graduating. They're getting local jobs. They're going to college or they're going to university. And I promise you, friends, they are bit by bit, they're breaking that cycle of hopelessness. They are doing it, and they are very much becoming a big part of what's good about this place. They're breaking that cycle. It's going to go away. It is going away. And that's a wonderful thing. Now, on the back of this, if you'd like to turn it over, there's a little poem that I wrote. I wrote this some years ago, and the beginning of the little poem tells you about how the children feel, and at the end of it, it tells you how they want to feel. And I called it "The Invisible Children", and by the way, it's nobody's fault that they're invisible because they'll never ask for help, because back to the beginning, because they don't think they're worthy. You understand that? So none of you are to blame. The silent generations with anxiety, never asking for aid, slipping through the cracks of society, their silent cries creating in the ether of time a heaviness made, wanting to fade into the walls as they just don't fit in, their heads always looking down as they walk the school halls, wearing other people's clothing castoffs, too big or too small, and shoes that seldom fit if ever at all. Their wee tummies ever grumbling, always hungry and sore, growing yet not as they should, and the girls getting pregnant as soon as they could, and the cycle starts again once more. As teens, they're always hungry, going several days without food, thinking taking drugs will help to quell their hunger and their pain, wanting so much to be the same, just to experience what it would be like to fit in, to feel equal to and never lesser than their peers, with clothing that's just for them and shoes that actually fit. They dream of a life where they could look up, a life where they can be equal and have an actual identity, or go to college or university, go to work and be able to support a family, go to college or university and make a difference in the world. That's what we're about. That's what Warm and Cozy is about. And that's what we are doing, and that's why new stuff is so important, because that's the stuff that gives this smile. And none of us get paid. We do it all for free. Every money, every wee bit of money we raise goes directly to the children, goes directly to the needy. And if you'd like to donate, you can go online to canadahelps.org, put in Warm and Cozy with a Z, and put a donation in. It can be an annual donation, a one-time thing. They'll automatically give you a tax receipt. And be a link, be a link in this amazing chain where we all join together. And don't ask questions about the parents or if the children deserve it. Just do it. You know, yesterday Brian and I were out and spoke to, you probably all know Randy Hargreave that runs the Lions down there. And he does a soup kitchen every Tuesday for the needy people. And last year, Brian were there to see Randy about something, and it was a very, very cold winter day, and there were all the people lined up. Not one of them had a hat or gloves or socks on their feet, and it was freezing. So what did we do? What do you think we did? Did we walk on by? No. We run over to Dollarama. I got one of our great big bags, filled it with hats and socks and whatever, gloves, rushed back to Randy and said, there you are, lovey. Go up there and give them all something. And so that's what we did yesterday. Giant tiger gave me a whole big pile of socks. Everybody helps, and we were there with four of our big huge bags to give it to Randy, who's giving of his own time to be a link in the chain in this amazing community. And you're all doing your part. You're all doing your bit, and I thank you very much on behalf of everybody. I know this community, I know this is the most amazing community personally, from what my family went through when my home went on fire and five of my family almost died, including my husband Brian, who was unconscious for four and a half days and airlifted. We're not going to graves, but there's been huge amount of surgeries over these years. And I don't think we could have survived it without the love and compassion from this community. So it just helps with everything. And when I say you're all awesome, I just mean it. You're all awesome, and thank you so much for this opportunity. Does anybody get any questions? Just fire them at me.
Thank you, Phyllis. Thank you so very much. You are absolutely priceless. What you do is priceless.
You're more than welcome.
And I'm sure there are more people have more to say, so I won't say it all. Counselor East.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's just a thank you, a simple thank you from me.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I was glad to see your name here because I was actually talking about you last week. So now it saves me an email that you're here. We're having the November twentieth, we're having our Hope Housing and Health Symposium where our tagline is "Action to Awareness", so we're hoping to have kind of options for the community of where they can get help, but also how the community can help you and other organizations. So if you wanted to send stuff or send me an email with kind of a wish list of items that you need and what the community can do to help you, that would be great. So that we have some, like a takeaway table, that just what people can do when they leave. So I thought of your organization instantly because I know we've come across you multiple times, and kids in the community really appreciate the work that you do, and so do we. So I would love to see people be able to help you if they can.
It would be nice if we can form a group, a little group of people who can help each other, similar to what you're just saying. Because often we have situations come along where we
Talk on the mic. The folks at home won't be able to hear what you're saying. Thank you.
It would be nice if we were able to form a small group of other people involved and maybe even in other charities where we can reach out and form that link, where I can lift the phone and phone so-and-so and say, this is maybe more your bailiwick, you know, and go around like that. Because when we get called, especially emergency calls, we act immediately. And like this last year, we closed four families with their houses burned down, all within twenty-four hours. Or we get a call in the middle of the winter with somebody walking about with bare feet in the snow, we act immediately. So it would be nice. And the other thing right now is, due to the stress people are under, I'm getting calls about people who are suicidal, and that's another, and even teens that are suicidal. And it would be lovely to have some people that I can phone and say, so-and-so, this is a teen. Can you phone somebody? Can you jump in? I'd really appreciate thoughts on that.
So we have a group going with community service providers now, and I'll send you an invite so you can connect with the organizations that you're looking for. I'll send you an email today about it.
That's wonderful.
No problem.
Thank you so much. God bless you all.
Please stay there. Phyllis, we're not finished. Counselor Patel would like to say something. Sorry.
You take up too much time.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So listening to your presentation, it was great, and I appreciate what you're doing, buying new. Because like yourself, I'm an immigrant, and when I first moved to Canada, we had to live off second-hand clothes and hats and gloves. And you're completely right. It has to be individual. You have to be able to fit in because you're going to school. So I appreciate what you're doing in terms of providing new rather than doing the second-hand way. So thank you very much for coming in and bringing in light something that I was aware of that. I read your article back in twenty-four, but I didn't know that you were buying new, so, which is great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And by the way, second-hand clothes before I let you all go, you know me, I've always a story. But anyway, there's a place beside the, I think it's the Presbyterian Church in Coldwater, and they have like a wee shop. So if you have any gently-used clothing, take it all down to them. People can come in and it's all free. So don't be dumping stuff out. Take it there because it goes back to the community. And as I say, we were often offered second-hand stuff, but for the reasons I've explained, we can't do that. But just take it all down there, and they're welcoming you with open arms. Okay?
Thank you, Phyllis. One more. Mayor Gordon.
Thanks for coming in and give us an update on all the good work you're doing. Truly, that's the Lord's work. So I'm so happy that you're here. I'm so happy that your program is thriving. When I saw the Weber Foundation's donation to you, I was elated because, you know, this is life-changing money that you're getting, but there's never enough. As quickly as the money comes in, the money is spent wisely and there's more need. So as troubling and as challenged as our community is right now, and we're not that dissimilar from our neighbors, whether, you know, they're locally or across the province or across the country, times are really tough. And it's just really rewarding to see, despite, you know, some of the abject poverty and the need, there's a richness in our community and benevolence and giving and philanthropic work such as you're doing and other service groups. And some might say, well, there's overlap. Well, there needs to be overlap, much like a blanket, there has to be overlap. So we have our shelters, we have our food banks, we have, you know, all kinds of social service agencies, and we have small agencies like yourself that have been making a difference for almost twenty years. So thank you for what you're doing, and hopefully tonight, the people that watch us online, either live or on YouTube, maybe someone else will be moved and inspired to visit that link. If you'd like to plug it again.
Warm and Cozy, it's canadahelps.org, and if you put in Warm and Cozy with a Z, Children's Charity, you can donate any amount. And by the way, the money we got from my dear friend Reinhardt was a quarter of a million dollars, but we didn't get the money, guys. So it's good opportunity to explain. It went into a special account. And I think this caused a lot of problems with a lot of wee charities because people thought, oh, you've got a great big lump of money. No, we didn't. You get a small amount of interest at the end of each year, and that's it. So because a lot of people didn't want to give money because they thought we were loaded, which we were not. So we depend on the support to keep going, and, but I budget for miracles, and they happen all the time, and they really do. When I need something, God provides it, like the twenty-nine pair of boots we needed. I had forty bags going out to Tay Shores, and we were minus, we didn't have enough money to buy twenty-nine extra pair of boots. So my friend Reverend Lois Brown arrived and I says, Lois, get the kettle on. We need to talk to the boss. So Irish always have the kettle on. So we had a big mug of tea and sat down and we talked to God. I just talked to him like he's a friend. I said, boss, you know, there's also up those stairs, there was a label on the sizes on, and that was the end of it. And then we just accepted that and said, thanks for that. So the next morning, Brian and I get a phone call at ten thirty, and I'll tell you who it was from. It was from the gentleman who used stone-bam beach glass, Glenn. Do you know, that's him. Glenn phoned, and he says, Phyllis, can I come? I've got a bit of a delivery for you. I says, come on ahead. Here's where we live. So he ran, he landed in about noon, and he had a lovely young lady with him. He says, I brought my friend with me because you'll never believe what happened. I said, oh, well, I think I'll believe all right. So they came in, they got a big mug of tea and sat down. He says, are you going to tell Phyllis what happened? I says, all right, go ahead. Says, well, she says, I said my prayers last night, and after I said my prayers, I felt this angel speaking to me and telling me I was to get something to write with, and the angel told me that I was to phone him and tell him that we were to go shopping to buy twenty-nine pair of boots for you, and even gave her the sizes. She was very obedient. She wrote it all down, and she immediately phoned Glenn. Glenn says, that's why she's here, because nobody would believe this. Nine o'clock, they were at Walmart with their big list. They rounded at our house with all these twenty-nine pair of boots. And the two of them, along with Brian and I, went up those stairs and were able to put a pair in every one of those bags. The four of us delivered all forty sacks by two o'clock that afternoon, and I swear that is the truth. Nobody knew that but Lois and I, and it wasn't even twelve hours later when they were delivered. So I tell you, miracles are real and they truly happen. And that's my closing word.
Thank you so much, Phyllis. You're a miracle.
Can I get an amen? We're not supposed to have God in these meetings. It was frowned on, you know, but somehow he works himself in in mysterious ways. So anyway, suffice to say, higher power, whatever it is, Creator, there's definitely a lot of amazing things going on in our community. So it's lovely to hear the good news, along with, you know, what often we're presented is the sadness and negativity and things that we just can't remedy, you know, homelessness and drug addiction and mental health issues, all these challenges we face in our community. And yet, despite that sort of dark cloud, there is light shining behind it. So thank you for what you do, and I appreciate the update to council, and I'm hoping that this maybe will inspire people to continue giving because that large donation and the trickle of funds, I think, was really important for you to share with everybody, that it just wasn't a big bag of money that was bestowed upon you or other recipients. It's set to drip slowly over time, so.
I'm going to frame mine.
So I'm showing it on whatever. I don't have a way to projection, so it's just on my screen. But thank you again, Phyllis. Cheers.
Okay, well, that was too much fun. We have to move on. We're at ten point two, Community Reach North Simcoe, Accessible Transportation Service update. Ms. Cindy Hastings, Executive Director, to provide a PowerPoint presentation to council. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. I don't know how I follow that.
You don't.
I'll give her a go. Okay. Anyways, good evening, Madam Chair, Your Worship, members of the council and staff. I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm joined by members of our board, staff, drivers are at home watching with their popcorn. So I just want to preface this presentation to explain why we're here. We watched and attended the microtransit RFP, Open Houses, and we got the sense that maybe council staff didn't really understand what it is that we do for the towns. So we're not critical of your exploration of looking at alternate forms of transit. It's crazy expensive, and I know you have challenges with repairs and things. It's just, we wanted to explain what it is that we do for the community. So if I can go to the next slide, please. So Community Reach has been working with the town of Midland for twenty years. So it's just, we started with a pilot project. So they engaged Community Reach, started with one van, and the town of Midland's been a leader, like for twenty years, helping out people with accessibility challenges. So kudos to the town. And just a little bit of a background, who can take it? So we do require, as per the contract, we do require an application form and a medical assessment form. So both of those need to be included before you can take the service. We operate within the boundaries of Midland and Penetang Wabashin, and this is just to be clear, only available to Midland residents. When someone wants to book a ride, they call in, they speak to our staff, and they book it. So a little bit of a difference is that we're a door-to-door service. So our drivers will pick you up at the door, take you to the vehicle, get you in safely, take you to your destination right to the door or through the door. So very important for our seniors, especially in the wintertime. And I just wanted to share too, we actually just moved to a new, it's a Canadian AI-driven ride booking platform. So we, so just ironic that you're talking about microtransit, so we've actually moved to a platform that we can actually do all that. So we've chosen Blaze because that's what the county uses and also used by the Sega Clearview and Cullingwood, I believe, for their accessible transportation. And just, we're up to, I put twelve to thirteen hundred rides a month. Sometimes it actually gets a little bit higher than that. You're quite busy. Next slide, please. So I don't want to confuse things, but I know my colleague Deborah mentioned the TLC program when, at the public meeting last time. So this is available to all North Simcoe residents. This is separate from the Midland Accessible Transit. So we'll take people to medical appointments, shopping, social activities within North Simcoe. It's also available to Midland residents. We actually have quite a few, and that's a growing number as well. Um, it's also available to Midland residents. We actually have quite a few and that's a growing number as well. Uh, taking them to specialist appointments like down in, uh, Barry, Newmarket and, uh, in Toronto. And, uh, it again is a door-to-door service under the same platform and we do about 400 rides, uh, a month, um, through this service. And, um, we don't, uh, I, I just, I need to put a plug in. We don't, we don't receive any provincial, uh, funding for this. So this is all, uh, due to the generosity as Mayor Gordon, as you mentioned, the generosity of the, of the, uh, local community, um, stepping up and the service clubs and, um, one-time grants and of course the municipalities. Uh, next slide, please. So why, why do you need us? Um, we're, as I mentioned, we do door-to-door, um, and, uh, it, it's not, um, corner to curb, which I know the micro transit system operates on is not accessible, uh, to all the clients. We're a registered charity. Um, just being a charity isn't enough, but we, we're, we're all here. I just, we're, we're all here because we care about these people that we're, we're taking in our vans. And we have a passion, uh, for helping the community. And I threw in the statistics because it's, it's staggering. I'm, I'm anxious to see the 2026, um, stats that come out. So, um, so 86% of our riders are seniors and 20% of Midland residents are 65 plus. So we're way over the provincial average of, of, uh, 18. And, um, the biggest point is without, um, you know, without the service, many of our seniors, um, they're, they're, they're not going to, uh, they're not going to get out. We're part of this. And we talk about the circle of care, right? The, the getting them to medical appointments, getting them to access food. And to, uh, social services and in social activities. So we, we, um, I think we're all starting to understand, uh, the effects of so, social isolation, isolation, sorry. And, um, the effects that can have on, uh, on the health of seniors. And I just, uh, I had a couple, sorry, I need my glasses here. Um, I just wanted to share a couple of things that, that, uh, our clients say to our drivers. Um, and, and this happens, uh, on a weekly basis. They, they, they say they honestly don't know what they do, uh, without the service. And I know one of our drivers had a, um, passenger this week and she said, if, if you weren't here, I wouldn't leave my house. So it's very, very important, um, that we, we keep the service going, uh, for the sake of our seniors. Um, next slide, please. We're at here asking that you, um, so regardless of what direction you take, uh, whether you stay with your fixed route transit, move to micro transit, that you consider, uh, keeping the Community Reach contract, um, until the expiry of the contract. Start an open dialogue with us. Like we're, we're happy to be part of the solution. So maybe there's ways that we can complement whatever you decide to do. We can change what we do. Maybe there's, you know, feeder routes that we can do. I, we, we just, we want to be part of this. Um, so we're open to, uh, discussions with staff and council. And, uh, lastly, just, uh, again, I mentioned that we're a registered charity. We have an opportunity to put in, um, joint applications, uh, for funding, uh, to help support, um, the service. And I thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry, I wasn't as engaging as the last speaker, but, um, if you, uh, I did my best. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, we do have some questions or comments from council. Counselor Bald? Or sorry, Counselor Ball?
Thank you. So our number one complaint that we've been hearing about the micro transit is people having to call in. So I'm wondering, how does that work with you? Does somebody call in for some of these people that are riding with you? Do you have scheduled like preemptive, we're going to come to this person's house every week at the same time? I wonder if you can just touch base on that.
Sure. Um, through the chair, uh, to the counselor. So everyone calls in. So we, we've moved to this new platform. We do have the capability of, of the same thing using the app, but, our clients are seniors and, um, they, they want to talk to someone. Um, because I can hear them on the phone. Sometimes they, they booked a ride, then they talk. So yes, you call in, you can book reoccurring rides. So we try not to go too far in advance, but we do have some, uh, especially seniors, they know where they want to go and when. So they'll call us up at the beginning of the month and they'll book their, their medical appointments or, you know, when they're going to hair appointments, ascension, all that. So, um, it is very, um, it is very personal. They, they do, uh, they do need that, that phone call.
Thank you. Yeah. I've heard from some of the seniors that they don't use a phone at all. So I'm wondering if you accept somebody else calling on their behalf.
Of, of course. We have lots of, uh, caregivers that, that set up the rides on behalf of their, um, uh, mothers and fathers and, yeah.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. And thank you for your presentation. I did learn a few facts that I wasn't aware of. Uh, could you elaborate a little bit for me, clarify this new Canadian AI-driven ride platform?
So I added that in just because we've moved, it was just, uh, coincidental. We had actually just moved to this new platform, really to try and accommodate the number of rides that we're delivering now. We, we had a, an interesting system that, we use that, that worked, but, uh, we needed to move to something that was, um, really designed specifically for transit and, and then, um, and then the RFP comes up. Um, it's like, oh darn, we just, we just moved to this. So, um, uh, what, what that is, is, um, so AI, uh, optimizes the, um, optimizes the, the, the routes, right? So we're really trying to find some efficiency. So if there's an opportunity for, um, a driver to, you know, pick up one client and then on the way to a destination, they can pick up another. Um, it, it does that, helps us do that. So, uh, just finding some more efficiencies, enabling us to take more, um, more clients.
Thank you. And, and just as a follow-up, will it also provide you with your statistics as well? Like?
Yes. Yes. So I, I can, I can get you a whole host of, uh, statistics.
Counselor Major.
So that was an outstanding presentation and, uh, most of my life I've been in transportation and that's awesome that you're doing 40 plus. I did the quick math, you're doing over 40 a day. And, uh, I gotta take your staff as, uh, just specialists at doing this and, and it's really neat. Because I'm around town all day and I see, you know, the reach vehicles going around, but I had no idea like 40 plus things a day. And it's not where people just, you just pull up and people jump in. It's like, they have their challenges and that. So I'm really impressed and just keep it going. That is absolutely outstanding.
Thank you, Council Major.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hastings, for coming in and enlightening us with your presentation. Maybe if you had a poem, it would make it better.
I'll take one up.
Since, since you don't, uh, thank you for, um, serving the Midland community for 20 years. It's, it's truly amazing. I, I watched the vans go up and down on King Street and it's, it's been a blessing for the senior, uh, the seniors, uh, community for Midland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ball has a follow-up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I actually rode the bus with residents this week. So a, a lot of accessibility type questions that I didn't think about are in my brain now. Um, when you're talking about collaborating with Town of Midland with, are you currently collaborating or would you collaborate with the drivers? Cause when a lot of seniors are using the bus, to me, they were saying the driver knows me. They know where I live. They know where I'm going. So I can't call in because I don't know where I'm going. The driver does. So I don't know if there is some sort of referral system where the bus drivers like recognizing that this person may have to start using accessible transit instead of regular transit. Is that in the works or has that been thought of and could it be thought of?
Um, through the chair to, uh, Counselor Ball. So just so I understand, um, how do they get onto our, like from the regular transit onto our, our program? Very, very easy. So it's a simple application process. Often when that's the, the need, um, uh, one of the caregivers, like a family member will, will assist or perhaps, um, medical professional, uh, will, will assist them. Uh, I'm sorry, I get a little nervous presenting. I did forget about, um, we serve actually a lot of clients that are going to, um, adult day programs. Uh, so experiencing cognitive decline. Um, so we, having that door-to-door service or in their case, it's a door through door because they need to get to that. Like they can't just drop them at the, at the door. And that's a, that's a really important thing for, as, as we all know, for the, the caregivers as well. But, but absolutely. And we, and we get, um, it's good. We're part of the North Simcoe, Ontario, uh, Health Team. So we've been involved, uh, with the Collaborative Table. And, uh, we've been working with, uh, so we get calls from Navigator at the hospital too, like discharges, um, as well. For people. So lots of different people can, um, can sign these clients up.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks for coming and, uh, really giving us a little, putting a bore, sort of flesh on the bone, as it were, about, uh, the services you provide. We did get sort of the Coles notes, um, at the, at the public meeting, but at this, this presentation, I think was well-deserved. And it is really validating, uh, to hear that, uh, scheduling for seniors, you know, arguably the, some of the most vulnerable ones with some of the biggest challenges. Through telephone hasn't been a problem for all these years. Uh, but that was a recurring theme from several people who spoke repeatedly at the meeting. That this was just never going to work because seniors just won't do this. So, I mean, I, I personally knew that not to be the case, but that's someone else's perception is their reality. And it is quite validating to hear from the experts that it hasn't been an issue, isn't an issue and, and wouldn't continue to be an issue. Briefly, I just wanted to share, you know, our, our conversation, uh, as the talk about this RFP for micro transit ensued, we had a conversation and I, you know, what I shared with you about my commitment to your contract, I would just wanted to formalize that by putting it on the public record. So I recognize, uh, the long, you know, the longevity of the relationship and the value that your organization has brought to the residents of Midland for decades. And one of the first concerns was, hey, you know, if you go with, with micro transit, if this RFP, you know, results in us making a change from fixed route to micro transit, what happens to Community Reach? And, uh, you know, that's a darn good question, especially as you're trying to plan, um, you know, capital needs and operating needs into the future. And, you know, you reminded me that we have a contract that exists for another two years. And, uh, you know, I told you and you're, you're here to validate this, that I have absolutely no intention of, uh, seeking to get out of the contract with your organization early. Um, I can't speak for what a future council would do in, you know, in 2028. But from my perspective, my commitment to you was that when we're looking at a micro transits provider, clearly whoever's going to be, uh, successful in the RFP has the ability to offer the, a replacement for Community Reach. But we don't have to go for that kind of engagement. If we go at all to micro transit, we can opt for just the replacement for the fixed routes to on-demand and leave the, uh, truly accessible form of transportation to our partnership of Community Reach. So that's what I shared with you, that I'm still of that opinion, but I just wanted to put it out there formally. Of course, the, uh, people who have some limited mobility issues continue to operate or to use our normal transit system. And they haven't progressed to the, the need for, uh, for your transit services yet and maybe never will. Uh, so that level of, you know, accessibility on our general transit would always remain, no matter what we, whether we stick with our fixed route now or we, if we make the change. But I just wanted to put that out there, share with my council colleagues and, uh, the, the broader public that I respect, um, all of the work that your organization and your drivers have provided to our community, including my own mother. You know, who used your services routinely, uh, while she was alive and, uh, that I have no intention of, if we move ahead with micro transit, of suggesting that we, um, break the contract with your organization. So I just, for what it's worth, I told you that privately, face to face, but I wanted to say that now on the record. So thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you to all your drivers for everything they do. And, uh, continue to expect that relationship to exist potentially beyond me, but you know, at least throughout the remainder of this term. And, uh, hopefully, uh, for many, many years and put in the future. So thanks for the presentation tonight.
Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost, and thank you, Ms. Hastings, for the, the presentation. And, um, I'm, I'm glad you came in and, uh, and, uh, shared us, uh, you know, exactly, uh, what you do. Did have a, a, you know, a broad spectrum of what Community Reach was all about. Um, but obviously there's, um, you know, the, the, your organization probably feels threatened. That's the, the elephant, the elephant in the room here, right? And, and I, you know, I, I'm, I don't blame you. Now, in, in saying that, we, we heard from, from seniors, uh, we had a, a, a public, uh, you know, open, uh, information session, Q and A, um, learned a lot there. So, um, and main reasons for, for us trying to, you know, to entertain my, micro transit was, you know, parts, buses, that's, uh, breakdowns. Um, so there's a lot of, you know, there's, there's, there's some big decisions to be made, waiting for the staff report to come, come back to council, uh, as well. What's interesting is your, your AI platform that you, um, um, just, uh, put in place. And, and that'll make it more efficient, uh, obviously. And, um, I did have a conversation with Mayor Gordon about, you know, why, why can't we just get a, a platform for the town of Midland, right? So, um, but if we're servicing the whole community, um, that would probably be, you know, mega dollars and a whole team to, to do that. But you know what? We, we could just get a platform just to do our normal routes and just have our own buses and, and that might be a, a possibility too. And, and what the costs are, are those. So, but, uh, I'm looking forward to the staff report. I'll have those questions for the staff when it, when it comes, comes to, uh, to council. And then, uh, we'll see where it goes from there. But thank you very much for the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I have one more, uh, one more comment? Um, I forgot to ask, is, if anybody, uh, staff or council would be interested in coming to our offices, maybe doing a ride-along, really seeing what our, um, what our drivers do and meeting some of our clients, uh, I'd be more than happy to facilitate that.
I'd be happy to do that. Can you leave, um, a contact number with, with the clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation and I'll be in touch. Okay, moving along, uh, number 11, Committee and Local Board Delegation or Memo. We have none. 12, Reports and Other Items Withdrawn From the Consent agenda for Council's Consideration. Includes Presentations by Consultants Regarding Report Under Consideration. So we have a presentation from Gordon Way, Manager of Transportation Planning, and Cindy Chung, Transportation Engineer from RJ Burnside and Associates Limited. Welcome.
Evening. Mayor Gordon, members of council, uh, my name is Gordon Hughie and I'm the Project Manager and Transportation Engineer with RJ Burnside Associates. Um, I'm pleased to be here today to provide our findings and recommendations on the Strategic Parking Management Study. Um, and I'll just wait a moment here, uh, for the slides to come on screen. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so our goal this evening is to ensure that council has a clear understanding of the rationale behind our various, uh, parking management strategies that we have considered. Um, and we'll conclude with a set of options and recommendations for council's consideration and direction moving forward. All right, next slide, please. Um, I'll begin with a brief overview of the study and for the interest of time, I'll quickly go through items number one to three. Um, and spend more time on items number four to five. Uh, most of the first few items were covered in a previous presentation to council that I made on, uh, July 9th. So it's not new information. And I want to spend most of my time today talking about those various options and recommendations. Uh, the goal that we had for this study was to create a strategic plan that optimized the use of existing parking resources, support local businesses, and to improve the visitor experience. Next slide, please. The study was structured into four key phases, each designed to build upon the previous one. Phase one focused on reviewing the existing conditions. Phase two focused on collecting feedback from the public and collecting parking data. Phase three identified parking challenges and issues. And finally, phase four brought all the work together into a final plan. And then move on to our scope of work. To ensure that our analysis accurately reflects the parking conditions today, a comprehensive data collection program was undertaken. This data collection took place on Saturday, July 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. with data collected every hour. Periodic spot surveys were also conducted at various times in the summer to capture key demand peaks on both the weekday and the weekend days. From our findings, we observed that parking near key locations, and this is no surprise, particularly along King Street and the Harbor Lot, were consistently above this 85% occupancy for consecutive hours. And this indicated to us very high utilization and limited availability in those areas, especially during the afternoon peak period. Next slide, please. Once the parking data was collected and analyzed, it served as the foundation for our next stage of work, which was producing the various parking management options. Next slide, please. I'll now provide an overview of the consultation process. Public engagement has been a key part of this study. We launched a dedicated webpage and hosted four online surveys. We also held two public open houses, the first on April 29th, which focused on identifying key parking issues, and the second on August 13th, which presented the draft recommendations. Communication between this study and the waterfront master plan also occurred between the two project teams. For the key parking challenges, our analysis revealed several key areas related to how parking is used across the downtown and waterfront areas. First, there was an uneven distribution of demand with high demand on King Street and in the Harbor Lots, and lower usage in the peripheral lots and streets. We also noted unique challenges at the Harbor Lot, which serves a wide mix of visitors, boaters, and seasonal users, often reaching full capacity during peak times. And lastly, there was an opportunity to integrate the slip user and boat launch fees, improving convenience and the perception of value for those accessing the waterfront. I'll now go over a few options and recommendations for council's consideration. The Burnside Parking Report has both short-term, medium-term, and long-term options. It serves as sort of a roadmap for managing parking. Today, I'll just be speaking about the short-term recommendations. Staff will be bringing the medium-term and long-term items for council consideration in future years. I'd like to begin by addressing the topic that is top of mind for many in the community, which is paid parking. To make a rational decision on the concept of paid parking, we established a decision-making framework. So we identified two approaches, each with different levels of intent. Option A focused on parking, focuses on parking management. So this approach would target paid parking only for those high-demand areas or hotspots where turnover is most needed. The priority here is to use paid parking as a parking management tool, encouraging turnover in those areas with high demand. For this option, the revenues from the paid parking would need to offset the direct costs of parking machines and related signage only. Option B is a full system implementation. So under this model, all parking areas would be incorporated into a unified self-sustaining system, where revenues from paid parking and permits would cover all ongoing costs of parking operations and maintenance of the entire system, such as the machines, lot maintenance, insurance, enforcement, and other related parking expenses. Like option A, it also focuses on achieving that parking turnover, but with a broader goal of long-term financial sustainability for the parking system as a whole. We also established a framework for when parking is considered busy, when overall utilization is below 85%, but certain areas experienced higher localized demand, like King Street. The focus should be more on optimizing the existing supply by targeting those hotspot areas. And based on our data collection, that's where the town sits right now. Next slide, please. In this presentation, I've taken the report's short-term recommendations and I've packaged them into four options to make this presentation more digestible. Option A focuses on implementing paid parking as a management tool, like I mentioned earlier. So under this option, paid parking would be introduced on all downtown streets and within the Harbor Lot. This approach is effective in encouraging turnover and maintaining parking availability near key destinations. From our financial standpoint, our analysis found that the risk of this option being unable to cover the paid parking machine cost is a medium risk between 2025 and 2030. If the parking rates, for example, were closer to the $1 per hour mark, there is some risk that expenses of the parking machines will not be covered, but if rates were a bit higher, say closer to the $3 per hour mark, the paid parking machine expenses would be covered. However, that risk drops to low between 2030 and 2040 as parking demand increases. Overall, our findings indicate that based on a range of possible scenarios, including parking rates, seasonal demand, and operating conditions, this program would most likely cover its costs while improving parking efficiency in high-demand areas. Second option, option B considers a full-system paid parking model, where all downtown parking spaces would be subject to payment. While this approach is also effective in promoting turnover, our analysis shows that it presents a high financial risk, particularly in the early years between 2025 and 2030, due to the cost of the many parking machines and signs. During this period, revenues would likely fall short of covering the full cost of the system operations, so that the machines, the maintenance, and the enforcement. And, but that financial risk decreases gradually over time, becoming a medium risk by 2035 and low by 2040. As such, this option is not recommended, as it would most likely achieve, it would most likely not achieve the intended goal of creating a self-sustaining parking system, and would likely pose a financial strain. Option C focuses on practical measures that are relatively lower in cost and can be implemented quickly to optimize the existing conditions. So these include steps such as adding more quickstop spaces for short-term parking, expanding accessible parking to improve convenience for all users, advancing a commercial alleyway improvement program to beautify key pedestrian connections, enhancing safety, lighting, and comfort, and installing additional wayfinding signage to make it easier for visitors to locate available parking and to navigate downtown. Collectively, these improvements are intended to enhance the visitor's experience, making downtown visits more convenient and comfortable and welcoming while supporting local businesses. Option D focuses on enhancing the parking experience for slip users, a unique group who often require longer-term parking due to multi-day boating activities. Our recommendation here aims to improve convenience while maintaining flexibility in how spaces are managed. First, we propose dedicating 25 spaces in the west portion of the Harbor Lot exclusively for slip users, available for both daytime and nighttime use. Importantly, if paid parking, if implemented, would not be active in these designated spaces. Second, we recommend designated lot 444 Bay Street and lot two at 509 Bay Street as additional slip user parking areas, again without daytime or overnight time restrictions. Finally, to support seasonal boating activities, slip users would receive one-time free parking at Pete Peterson Park once in the spring for boat launch and once in the fall for haul-out. So in summary, slip users would get parking privileges, including free parking in those 25 spaces in the Harbor Lot and time limit exemptions in the lots circled in red. I just want to make a quick clarification that the lots on Bay Street would still be open to general users. It would just be open to slip users without time restrictions for both daytime and nighttime. To conclude, our recommendations focus on a balanced approach to manage parking in downtown Midland. We are recommending, moving forward for council consideration, option A, which would introduce paid parking on street and in the Harbor Lot. This would be complemented by option C, which includes adding quickstop and accessible parking spaces, improving wayfinding, and enhancing the alleyways. Additionally, we recommend option D, which would provide one-time free parking in the spring and fall for boat users and allow unrestricted time limits at select lots to better serve the seasonal slip users. Option B is not recommended due to its high financial risk and limited benefit to the overall parking system. To support the recommended parking management approach, we are proposing the introduction of modern payment technology, so specifically a mix of pay-by-plate machines and mobile app systems. We understand that there were issues previously with the last technology, so we are recommending a pilot testing period to evaluate the ease of use and reliability. So as part of developing this paid parking framework, we also reviewed potential parking rates. Rates can be set on two key considerations. First, from a parking management perspective, rate should be set that actually encourages that turnover. And to get an understanding of this, we looked at nearby municipalities. Second, from a return on investment perspective, the rate should help cover the cost of parking machines. Our analysis indicates that a $1 per hour rate would cover the cost of operations after the first year, but the full return of the capital investment would take approximately six years. In comparison, a $3 per hour rate would recover costs much faster within two years, while still maintaining a reasonable level of accessibility and turnover. If council decides to move forward with option A, town staff would refine and finalize the details of that implementation. However, preliminary guidance is summarized here. Paid parking would apply, could apply to on-street locations in the Harbor Lot. Rates would again be confirmed through implementation, but are expected to range between $1 to $3 per hour, depending on location. Most streets would fall within this range. First Street and Midland Avenue could be priced at $1 per hour as they're more in the periphery of the downtown, to encourage people to park here. And the Harbor Lot could range from $1 to $3 per hour with a capped daily maximum of approximately 12 to 15 for longer stays. Discount programs could apply to accessible parking spaces, electric vehicle spaces, and short-term 15-minute areas, because the rationale behind discount programs is that the intent of this paid parking program is to manage demand where necessary, not in areas that do not have demand issues, such as those accessible parking spaces. The program could initially operate seasonally from May to September with the flexibility to expand year-round, if warranted, to achieve cost neutrality more quickly. And lastly, the active period for paid parking could be between Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which is similar to other jurisdictions. But again, if council decides to move forward with this option, these details would be further refined, would be further refined by staff. To implement option A, we are recommending a supported rollout. So first, we suggest increasing seasonal enforcement staff. And second, we recommend monitoring the needs for employee and daytime parking permits. Downtown employees typically park for longer durations, so they may require an appropriate permit if they need to park in certain areas. To support council's consideration, we prepared high-level cost estimates as shown in the table below for each recommended option. These figures represent preliminary and high-level capital and operating costs to guide future budgeting discussions, and the costs are shared here on this table. In closing, tonight's presentation has outlined sort of a balanced approach to parking management in downtown Midland. We believe option A, C, and D provides a practical path forward. At this stage, I believe staff are seeking council's direction on what option to consider further. But finally, on behalf of Burnside and the project team, I'd like to thank council, staff, and members of the public for their feedback throughout this study. I'd be happy to take any questions or to provide clarification on any aspect of the presentation or the report.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Before I open the floor to questions, I'm going to read the motion and ask for a mover and a secondor. The staff report CSR-2025-102 Parking Study Project Final Report dated November 5th, 2025, and the PowerPoint presentation provided by Representative RJ Burnside and Associates Limited be received for information. Could I have a mover and a secondor, please? Counselor East and Counselor Patel. Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor East.
Thank you, yeah, that was a great presentation. My question is, so when I read the report, there was a recurring theme over and over again when we spoke with our town residents that they wanted to see free parking. Why wasn't it addressed in this report?
Through you, your worship, I believe that that could still be an option. With the option C, for example, that would just be the wayfinding signage and the accessible parking spaces and beautifying the alleyways. That is an option for consideration. However, doing nothing without the paid parking would not address some of the key issues, such as the high-demand areas on King Street and the Harbor Lot. And in addition to that, how we utilized the public feedback was setting those thresholds, which I mentioned, for option A and option B. Option B has the threshold of taking those parking fees and ensuring that it would cover all the costs of maintenance and all the costs of parking machines. And we believe that it's a relatively high threshold to meet, but we believe that it's a necessary threshold to establish based on residents' feedback on not wanting to have paid parking. So that's sort of how we also established incorporating their feedback into the quantitative process.
Thank you, so just as a follow-up then, we didn't get a recommendation for the free parking subject, though, right? And the thing is, if we're kind of looking at, like Huntsville Tourism, for instance, Huntsville runs a free parking program, and they're extremely successful. I'm just wondering why, like, it's a recurring theme in when we spoke with our residents over and over again. Free parking is what they wanted, free parking. And we, as the council, understand that free parking doesn't pay the bills and the maintenance, right? So I understand both balances, but I'm just curious, why didn't we address more of the free parking so that we could understand the benefits versus the negatives of free parking? Like, I'd really love to see kind of that thrown into the quorum as well? So, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. So staff, when we do come back with a recommendation for council, we will have that analysis of, like, we'll have something in there as free parking as an option. So it wasn't that this review was to look at, you know, having, reviewing the paid system and what would be appropriate to have as a paid parking system. So free, yeah, I mean, nothing's ever free. There is always a cost, even if we do have free parking. But this review was to look at the paid parking system and, you know, ways we can tweak the old one, come up with a new one. But free is always an option, and when we do report back to council in the new year, we'll have some details in our report about that.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, and it was a great, great presentation. I thought it was awesome, so thank you.
Counselor Major.
Yeah, I know. Anyways, that was a good presentation. I grew up in Midland, and I think that the town dock is a no-go as far as personally, my own personal opinion, to pay for parking to go to the town dock on Georgian Bay, like. And then if you do charge like $3 or whatever, and say you have a, like, we used to have the Miss Midland, so now you come into Midland, you got to pay to park, to pay to get on the boat to go for a ride. Like, that's just, if you're trying to attract tourists, and we've already been down that road, paying to park to get on the boat, like, we're still a small town. And then if you go downtown and really look the way they did the Main Street when they reconstructed it, you go down to Orneville or Almyra or someplace like that, the parking spots show. But you go down in Midland, like, you got to look at the brick or whatever you're doing. So people were losing parking spots, because if you just blow in... So people were losing parking spots because if you just blow in and just park, you're in between, like, if you know what I mean, down there, there's no rhyme or reason where one parking spot is to, there's no, unless you get out and look at the bricks, like, it's not marked off. So that's a concern that I don't think too many people really take notice, note, note of.
Through you, your worship, I'll address maybe two points here. It's a very valid concern, and I think the the data that we collected shows that if a visitor were to try to park in a harbor lot to to go on a ferry as of today or in the summertime, they would, they would have a hard time finding a spot. It's very busy after 11:00 AM, especially in the afternoon. So with the introduction of of paid parking in their harbor lot, we are sacrificing perhaps their ability to have it be for free, but we are introducing the the matter of convenience. So they'll, they'll have that availability more readily available for them just due to the fact that we believe that the paid parking would be able to encourage that turnover. But in addition to that, if they don't want to pay for parking, there are parking spaces that are very close to the harbor lot that are still recommended to be free. And they're across the street and a few minutes walk away.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Way, thank you for giving, coming in, giving us a presentation. I guess, I believe we met three times or twice, I don't know. So I'm quite aware of all the work you've done. The report, and this report is like for big cities. You know, we're just a small town, you know, DOS for dummies, parking for dummies is what I think council was looking for. Just to comment for, you know, members of council, deputy mayor, mayor, there's one thing that we should all be considering without even spending any money down the road is bringing back the permits that businesses and business owners are using the town parking to work or run their business, which the ratepayer is supporting. And it says every year it's $90,000. So far, we have lost $300,000 since the program has ended. And we will continue to lose $90,000 to $200,000 per year, which will be a million dollars in 10 years. And if you count that 1 million is 4% on the tax rate over the 10 years. So without even doing any work, meaning bringing in the meters or bringing in the gates, here's some revenue that we could bring in and not have the ratepayers support someone working downtown or running a business. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I really appreciated this report. I think I've been on the most hated end of there's a lot of spots in downtown that we can park at. So this validated that for me, that you saw the same thing. I do appreciate that maybe people aren't finding them, which you had some great ideas about maps in each parking lot, the parking signs. I thought that those were really good ideas that we maybe hadn't thought about. And I'm saying there's lots of parking, but maybe people can't find the parking. So I, I liked that idea and it's inexpensive for us to put together, quite honestly. And it's just a more cohesive downtown feel. I also like that with the alleyway projects that you're suggesting with us giving grants for having more beautification in those to encourage people to use the lots. That's something that's come up in conversation a few times, that we haven't had a solid path forward. So that kind of, I think, gave us a starting point in this report. So I appreciate that.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post, and thank you for your presentation. Your report, the one thing that I found surprising was the, this is just a comment, and then I'll ask you a few questions, was the peaked demand is, was at 3 o'clock on Saturdays. I don't know why I found that surprising. And then you also commented about lot 1 and 6 are perceived, perceived to be highly utilized. Does that mean they're not? People just think they are? Reports saying overnight parking is not an immediate priority, where I know of a couple of places that have, that requested overnight parking. And then downtown employees, I think that's a good, we, to give them a break for sure. But residential parking, there's two buildings in Midland that both have applications in to put multiple residential units in them. One's in addition to a store, I saw the sign. And the other one is actually making a, a three-story building into a four-story for residences. And there's no, and these are just applications now for zoning changes. I, I think I understand that correctly. But there's no addressing where these people are going to park. So let's start with that, please, and thank you.
Through, through you, your worship. So one of the challenges with with this study is that we collected data. The most fulsome data collection was on a weekend, on a Saturday. And our, our analysis and and our assessment, we had to take a look at the, we wanted to take a look at both the weekend and the weekday. So we supplemented that weekend analysis with assumptions that we made for the weekday. And some of the employees and visitors were telling us that lot number one and lot number six were, were quite busy during the weekday. This didn't show up in our weekend analysis. So it made sense, though, because lot 1 and 6 are behind many of the businesses. So we assume that some of these lots are are being used heavily by employees. So how we incorporated that, that, that comment into our analysis is that through our sensitivity and scenario analysis, we assumed a higher percentage of parking in lot number one and six. And that's just how we, that's just how we incorporated that comment into our financial analysis. On the overnight parking, we do know that it is a, a concern right now based on a few, few comments. It didn't show up heavily during our public consultation period. But we do have a recommendation that is in the medium term, so between 2030 and 2035, that staff look at exploring overnight resident permits. So how this would work was, is that they would, it would be typically, it's typically a paid program that is monthly and residents are able to park overnight in municipal lots. And the benefit of this program from a town perspective is that they can control the number of spaces that is being used, monitor its use and understand how much availability there is in these lots. If, and the, the 2030 timeline may work, given that information about those two building, two development applications. If they're in the application process right now, they may be constructed in a few years' time, which fits perfect, which fits rather nicely with with that 2030 to 2035 horizon.
Thank you. You certainly gave us a lot to digest. I'm not sure that I've accomplished that yet. But option A would encourage on-street parking, which, the high-demand hotspot areas. And then would that include also, are you, is that encouraging parking in the parking lots, lots 1 and 6, paid parking, or it used to be free? I wasn't clear on that.
Through you, your worship, option A would just consider the paid parking on, on-street. The only lot that would be considered through option A is the harbor lot. There, there might be unintended consequence of visitors not wanting to pay and and parking in in the, in those parking lots, which create a conflict with employees that want to park there during the day as well. In our study, we, we do think that there are some incremental approaches that could be undertaken by the town if that were to happen, such as time limits or additional employee permits. But we don't know yet, and that's a tool that the town can consider moving forward with with any program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks for attending tonight to summarize that, that huge report. That was a lot of reading. I even had to run it through the old AI just to make sure that I was getting the right summary. So I didn't know you were coming tonight to do this presentation. So that's, thank you for doing that, but you could have saved, if I knew you were coming, probably would have saved me about an hour of comparative analysis. So parking's been one of those topics that just keeps coming back. It's the gift that keeps on giving for this council and previous councils, quite frankly. So both Deputy Mayor and I were on the previous council that was lucky enough to pull the trigger and implement the parking system that was, you know, dreamed up during the COVID times or that was paused during COVID. And that was effectively option B with the promise of, you know, bringing in staggering sums of revenues to the town, which would, you know, put us at 0% tax increases, all paid for by parking. It was quite fantastical at the time, and everybody bought it, myself inclusive. I mean, the evidence was brought by the vendor and the RFPs and whatnot. So needless to say, it didn't work. And it's not because we didn't try, because we've had paid parking, as you know, in our municipality for decades. And on-street was paid and the lots were free for, you know, whatever it was, two, three hours, those kind of things varied. And it worked. I mean, the machines didn't all the time because they're old and you couldn't get parts anymore. But the community didn't rebel against parking. It was affordable, people used it, and we actually made money, like, we actually made money off of it. So it was better than just being sustainable. And then we had to pull all that because we're ripping up the main street for infrastructure repair. And we tried to modernize with the machines that are used all over the world. And they're used all over Canada and in municipalities near us, including large ones with lots of complex people's needs, way more complex than Midland. And they all, it worked for them, but it just didn't work for us. I don't know, it became a stigma almost. And we made so many changes. Man, did we make changes. It was change after change. And and finally, it was just, public sentiment was so negative, you could have put a buck in and cured cancer, and people wouldn't have done it. Like, it was just that negative about it. So the decision was made early on in this term to just pull these things. And they're gathering dust in some warehouse right now. No one wants to buy them. And we, a lot of money was spent, not this term, but previously. So where I'm going with this is what we needed, I wish we had the advantage of a report like this before the decision was made, you know, everyone likes hindsight, a couple of terms ago. So better late than never. So what the option that we do hear an awful lot is free parking, only because I think people are terrified that we'd go back to what we had most recently. Anyone I've talked to really understands that free parking is heavily subsidized to the tune of, you know, almost $100,000 a year. And, you know, it would, being that it was a revenue generator and we used to offer a free December, and that was a gift to the downtown merchants, they were sponsoring it most of the time. The BIA used to contribute money to the good old, we had a Midland Parking Authority back in the day. It was a partnership. Everyone skipped along, you know, merrily and hand in hand, and everything worked until we ripped it all out and replaced it. And just the sentiment wasn't great. And there was other failures, too, like we weren't clearing the snow around the machines properly downtown. So you couldn't even get near it if it, if you did want to use it, you know, you just couldn't. So there was just a cascade of failures that we're, we're all learning from now. And I think the concerning part is here we are, last year of our term. Parking, we talk about every year. And I think there's probably some trepidation to move ahead with any of these options because, you know, some of us might want to come back again if the public would like to send us back to keep growing the community and doing all the other amazing things we've done this term. And any talk of parking, you know, has people's eyes rolling back in their skulls going, oh, God, the council's going to screw it up again and spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what I really appreciate about your report is this offers some clear, concise options. There, it's a phased approach that that this council or future councils can look to. It tells us how the cost recovery model can work yet again for the community. And, you know, with the objective of removing the burden of these municipal parking lots and the on-street and everything from the property taxpayer more to a user fee. And, you know, I agree with Counselor Patel that the parking permit that used to be wildly successful, although, again, we, lessons learned from that, we only had so many who were available, they sold out quickly. You know, we had identified spots for a while that were painted, and then when they filled up, it was challenging. There's things we could learn and and phase in some type of revenue generator again for the town. As we've abandoned revenue generators, you know, as we heard actually in the very beginning of our meeting, the challenges with taxation and the cost of running the community, as we're going to talk about later tonight in the the tax report, without other revenues other than taxation, it's going to keep going until the community grows. So I really appreciate the summary that you've provided us. Staff is going to look to report back to us with their best advice based on everything that's been aggregated from your hard work of your team. And I would expect that there'd be contrasting comparisons between other municipalities. For example, Huntsville was brought up tonight, showing the difference, you know, how how they've implemented it. I think Huntsville has 150 parking spots, which pales by comparison to Midland's parking spots. And they have a three-hour max during summer months, and it's funded by something called a municipal parking fund, which is primarily funded through sponsorships, some development charges, it looks like, and permits for heavy users, downtown businesses, building owners and even BIAs. So the allure or illusion of free parking could very well be achieved in parts of our community, offset with some of the costs from the people that benefit the most from the parking, which should be the people in the downtown core. So I really like the the fulsome suggestions here, the talk about our, our premium lot, which is that waterfront lot, which is also a trailhead, you know, to get onto our, our trail system. And we need to address overnight parking clearly because right now we're, we're giving tickets out to boaters who've launched that are, you know, they paid their fee, they launched their boat, they went off to enjoy a weekend out in Georgian Bay, and they come back to a ticket, at least when they're towing. But, you know, because our biolot doesn't allow them to park overnight. So there's some oversights that we are coming across that have been identified, not on your studies, but also from some angry residents coming in with the crumpled-up parking ticket going, you know, what the heck? So there's a lot of things we need to fix. And so I'm looking forward to that staff report that comes back to us with options, potential phases. And then this council can decide whether that is a scab we want to pick this term on what's left of it, or do we just bundle the whole thing up? Thank you very much for all your hard work and give it to the next council and and see if they want to be the bad guys in their first year, which is usually the best time to make unpopular decisions. So, that being said, I truly appreciate you being here tonight. The simple synopsis, the, the quick overview of the options, what the costs are likely to be, and no fantastical projections of revenue, thank you for that. Because, you know, I've been there, done that, and, you know, it's cost us a lot of money. And like, we got a warehouse full of these dusty machines. So if you know anybody that wants precise ParkLink machines, perfect working order, other than the screens are hard to see in the sun, got a lot, give you a good deal. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Oh, sorry, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a few comments. There's a lot of information here. I was on the parking committee for the town. Probably one of the reasons your, your company was hired because it couldn't come to conclusion with the data we had at the time. And we have a lot of information here. I heard in your, your presentation, the word could and should pay for itself. And those words I'm not very comfortable with because we're in this situation because we were losing $250,000 a year plus when the parking system was in place. And this is from staff reports coming to council. This is one of the reasons why those, those machines were pulled. So the data that you've given us, when I look at the data at 2030- when I look at the data at 2030, you know, our net will be in a will be in a negative from because we're paying for the machines and if we if we start this implementation in 2030, we're losing five, anywhere from 500, 600,000 to 730. But then a year into the next year, year two, 2031, there's a big gap there. We're 8,600 to 142,000 in profitable. So that that is a wide margin. And if you go to 2020, 32, 33, 34, the gaps are huge. 2034, 42,000 possibly earn up to 176,800. This is the reason why I thought this report was coming to council was to be more thorough, not broad numbers like this for us to kind of make a decision. You know, you also said in your report, you're you're here one day in July and you had spot surveys on on weekends here and there for the data. Doesn't give me a lot of confidence in making a decision on the parking. So we didn't hit, you know, I was hoping in the report that we'd have maybe our parks for non-residents have meters down there for some revenue. Okay, so this is, you know, when we go out to third party, I look at the report and stuff with downtown businesses paying for parking, a $90,000, you know, subsidy for or parking permits. Over and over again in this report, this has been discussed at the the parking committee meeting that there was, there was no definite answers to, and I still don't have a definite answer in this report. I just don't, you know, I understand you went to staff, but the staff suggestions or whether it's the mayor or or maybe the public, you take that feedback for sure. But I was hoping for something out of the box, like something different coming in. And with specific numbers, you know, more nailed down to that broad, whether it's losses or or revenue, right? So I'm hoping that you know, when the staff report comes, I'm gathering they're just going to pull information out of here. So based on this information, I'm still at a loss for our parking program. So that's the way I feel. You know, I'm not sure this report serves its purpose for myself to make to make a sound decision on the parking program the way I read it right now. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. I don't think anyone should would be able to provide you with a perfect answer and a single number that would be with full 100% confidence. If someone were to say that they were 100% confident in the numbers that they provide you, then I would be even more skeptical. And the reason for that is because I did a perfect data collection program would probably mean collecting data every day, 365 days of the year, which is not financially feasible. We make decisions based on level of risk. That's how we try to do it in this report. When staff come forward with a more defined option, we weren't, we didn't know what rate that that town staff would ultimately come forward with. And once those variables and once those options are further refined, I think that gap would close. It's just that in our scope, we weren't, we didn't afford the luxury of collecting multiple days and multiple months of data. As an engineer, I would love to be able to do that and to and to love to to create a perfect model, a perfect financial model to make decisions. But I just couldn't afford the luxury of that just due to the the budget and the size of the scope. So what we did was we tried to be realistic about it. We did do that full data data collection and we tried to minimize the number of assumptions that we had to make by doing those spot surveys and talking to residents. But ultimately, we tried to make our most informed decision with what we had. I believe one of our recommendations was both a summer and a fall data collection program that is done biannually before making any further decisions on the paid parking program that that is up for consideration as well. But I believe that when staff narrowed down an actual option with variables more defined, those gaps would close.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Just for full disclosure, I purposely did not attend or provide any input to this parking study. I didn't attend the open houses on purpose. I never met with you, never talked to you. I purposely wanted to stay as far away from this as possible so that there wouldn't be you know, my opinions about parking because I was one of the people proponents for pulling the parking system and just killing it. I didn't want to taint this at all. I wanted this to be as objective as possible. So that that's not casting any dispersion on any other counselors who availed themselves of the public meetings or sessions to communicate with you, but just for the record, I have never, we've never met, I've never talked to you, I never attended any of these meetings. This report is my first glimpse into the all of all of that work. So just, I don't want anyone to think I'm driving this from behind the scene. There's a lot of things I do drive from behind the scenes, community growth and things like that, but this is not one of them. This is one of those ones that needed to be as organic as possible because this is a a service for the community and one of the few revenue generators that we always enjoyed in harmony with the community that that fell apart. So if it's going to happen again, you know, if we're going to go down this path again, I want to get it right to Counselor Meredith's point because, you know, not only is it a black eye and a stain on us if we screwed up for a second time, even though we didn't technically screw up the first time, but we got to own the sins of the past. We don't want to mess it up a second time. So just so people know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm jotting some notes down and the options that are outlining the report, they're not our only options. So as Counselor McDonald mentioned, you know, there are residents in our downtown that need to park somewhere. So we have to look at that. We have, you know, businesses that we that council has talked about that want to look at maybe getting a permit for their employees. So it's nothing is outside of what we may come back with. And we are still looking at other municipalities to see how they're doing because in the news lately, there's municipalities that are that are dealing with their parking program, either making free parking completely, setting certain rates at certain areas. So when we come back, we're going to bundle all this up to give council our best of, you know, our opinion on on what we think you guys should consider moving forward. And council could say, thank you very much. We're going to push it off and let the next council deal with it. So all the ideas and suggestions that council are providing tonight, we are jotting down and we'll we'll review that as part of the report when we do come back forward in the new year.
Counselor Meredith.
Sorry, one final question I had. If this, your numbers that you have in here right now, if we don't implement this for 20 till 2030, obviously those numbers, those those expenses, I imagine the machines would be more expensive and so forth. So did you allocate for that in in those numbers or is there a percentage of inflation on on top of those numbers?
Through you, your worship. Yes, we did imply inflation to those numbers to expenses.
It looks like there's no more questions. Thank you again for your presentation. So counsel, you've heard the motion and we're to receive this for information. All in favor? Let's carry. I'm going to call a 10-minute recess. And we'll come back here at 8:32. On to 12.2 CSR dash 2025 dash 106. The Waterfront Master Plan, Drive One Release. We have a PowerPoint from Donna Hind, Principal, the Planning Partnership. Welcome, Donna.
Thank you. I'll just wait for the PowerPoint to be loaded up. There we go. Thank you very much. I'll go to the next slide. Thank you very much for the opportunity to walk you through some of our emerging ideas and thoughts for the waterfront master plan. The master plan, as the folks in this room know, is a big picture plan to guide how the waterfront will grow and change over time. Your waterfront area outlined in red on the screen spans about 13 kilometers along the water's edge. It aligns with the official plans, Schedule B. And go to the next slide. We've had a a robust engagement plan over the last few months. That's because you asked us to make sure that we were speaking to everyone in the community every step of the way. So we've done a combination of one-on-one conversations early on in the process. We've talked to many members of council. We've had some terrific working sessions with town staff. We had a great public information session in July and we want to take these ideas and emerging thoughts out to the community again before the holidays. Miss, on this image are just some speech bubbles of what we've heard along the way and a lot of the ideas that people have talked to us will be familiar to the members of council. I can go to the next slide. What I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through some of our thinking of the waterfront through eight different lenses. So as you know, your waterfront is a collection of a whole bunch of variables. It's not one piece of public publicly owned property along 13 kilometers. It's a combination of so many attributes and characteristics. So we decided to look at the waterfront through these these eight components. How do you get to the waterfront ways to and along? How do you walk along the waterfront or ride your bike? Where are the water's edge green spaces? We wanted to understand boating and all that, what that includes. We wanted to understand the terrific events and activation that occurs along the waterfront. The natural heritage, opportunities for shoreline stewardship. You have a lot of development applications along the water's edge. So we wanted to equip staff with some guidelines that they should be considering and reviewing those applications and then to talk about wayfinding and signage. So I'm going to walk through some of the highlights, some of our recommendations in each one of those eight components that together create the waterfront master plan. So we start with the ways to and along the waterfront. The blue line is a route that we've highlighted that is a collection of existing roads that when as a visitor come to Midland, I don't live in Midland, but I want to know how do I get to the various points along the water's edge. So I heard tonight a lot of talk about Huntsville. We did the Huntsville waterfront master plan twice, once many decades ago, and then once just recently, and they've just implemented a fantastic wayfinding program where on there on Muskoka Road three, three, they have beautiful signs that identify the proximity, direction, location of some of the key destinations along the Huntsville waterfront. So we're imagining that's what this blue line means. It means that these, this is the location where we're identifying the key destinations, the more minor waterfront parks, the ways to the waterfront. Going to go to the next slide. Let me just go back to the previous slide just for one second. What we notice is that there's three key public roads that end at the water's edge. And so we call these, as we typically do, a waterfront windows. So if we go to the next slide, they are specific and particular opportunities to use that 66 feet of public property that ends at the water's edge to tell the community, this is a place you can come down, dip your toe in the water, maybe launch a canoe or kayak, sit at the water's edge and enjoy the beautiful lake. These examples are from Burlington where I think they do a fantastic job of celebrating their windows to the water. These are the end of roads in very fancy neighborhoods where people are allowed to park for short periods of time along the waters, along the road, and then just get out and sit in a chair or sit on a bench and look at the waterfront. These are fantastic examples, precedents from Burlington. And I go to the next slide. Then we looked at trails and I personally was determined from the beginning to walk the entire stretch, the Bayport and then the south and along the south end of the trail. So one day in September, I set out and walked the whole route and I learned so much when I was actually physically there. I'm not going to go through the details of what I observed, but let me give you some highlights and we're going to start with the south segment along Aberdeen. So if we can go to the next slide. And so what I was noticing here is I wanted to identify how I get to the trail. I want to understand, I want to identify a trailhead, which could be Midland Bay Landing and the trailhead just means that's where the main information is. I'm going to know how long that trail stretches. I'm going to understand where I can get on and get off. I'm going to understand where there are opportunities to maybe sit along the way. And so along that way, I'm making some specific suggestions that we're still in the process of working through with town staff. Every time I have a meeting, I learn something new about the specifics of your waterfront. But one of the things in this location is other than Vascooture Park, it's it's not signed where the other routes are that you can poke through the residential neighborhood and get to the trail. It's not signed when I'm on that trail, how long I have to go to get to a washroom. It's not signed when I'm on that trail, how far I have to go to get off the trail. So these are things that I just want to put on the table for consideration. When I will walk along that water's edge and look at some of the residential development, I think to myself, they're doing some terrific plant. It has because it's longer established, some terrific planting along the water's edge. And wouldn't it be great to actually have a guide for homeowners to understand what plants they should and shouldn't be planting? Is there an opportunity to maybe provide some direction about the kinds of permanent facilities that are located on private property along their the water's edge? Let's go to the next one. Now I'm going to move into the harbor section, very well signed. Again, I look for an opportunity to maybe identify the town dock as one of three trail heads along the water's edge. Identify this as a location where there's public washrooms. I walk up and along the trail and I discover things like the sandy area by the the industrial building, but then I understand through conversations with town staff that maybe that's not something that we want to be highlighting because of the nuances of industrial operations. But there's other things like identifying access to the trail, to the trail from Quebec or some of the connecting streets that pass through forth. Let's go to the next slide. Then I'm going to come up through Pete Peterson and again, just a phenomenal resource you guys have. And I say to many other clients, use Midland as a precedent of a community that has been able to secure an almost continuous water's edge trail, especially through residential development. We know there's some missing links such as north of Pete Peterson. And then I'm going to go to the final stretch along through Bayport, north to Galway, so I can go to the next slide where I walk along. If we can just get where I walk along this water's edge and I learn about the the points of access to the trail and I think it should be signed from Bay Point Drive. I see the opportunities where I can get down to the water's edge at Foundry Park. I get to the end at Tom McCullough Park and I think it should be signed from the edge of that cul-de-sac. So just specific recommendations for the trail and we know, again, through conversations with town staff, that we want to make sure that the upcoming parks and trails master plan and the waterfront master plan completely dovetail. So I'm going to go to the next slide and talk about one of the the third component, which is water's edge green spaces. And we looked at all the places of public land at the water's edge. And we have categorized them according to major destinations, Town Dock, Pete Peterson, minor waterfront parks, parquetts, and then waterfront windows. And along this, the whole stretch, we've identified about 14 locations where you can get to the water's edge. There are two beaches, albeit one of those we may not want to be highlighting because of its proximity to the industrial operations. There's playgrounds, there's two public washrooms, there's a ball diamond. Let's go to the next slide. So in the document, we are being very specific about those locations and what the attributes and qualities are of each location where there's public property at the water's edge. And to just give you a little snapshot, I'm going to look at this north shore. And in the doc, in our evolving document, we can go to the next slide and what we want to take to the community are some of the suggestions that we're making for each one of those locations. So when I'm there, when I went to the end of Midland Point Road, I saw that there was somebody's landscape equipment that was in the road right of way. These are the kinds of things that working with staff, we'd like, I'd like to help figure out a protocol, a framework for what's allowed in those kinds of locations, the windows to the water and what's And what some of the other locations like Sunrise Park, that's already signed, it's clearly identified, which I love as a visitor to the town. I love to be able to know where I can and can't go. But other suggestions, like making sure that the trail to the water's edge is cleared regularly, that there's maybe the town standard bench or a waste receptacle that's right at the water's edge. There's others like Glenbrook Gardens, there's not a sign, there's no hint, but I know it's public property because I have the town's public land inventory. And so that's a suggestion where it might be good to let others know that that is clearly public property. Let's go to the next slide. I'm going to talk in this, so now I'm in the center. You can get yourself located. I'm going to talk about the town dock and Pete Peterson Park, the two major waterfront destinations, as you know. And we developed we developed a couple of concepts for those sites in particular. So let's go to the next slide. So as a destination park, it's funny, we're on the, coming after the parking study. We wanted to look at opportunities to obviously celebrate this location. So you'll see parking reorganized at the town dock. You'll see us purposely carving out a green space at the town dock where it could be a central lawn, a place for gathering and events because we know it's a very popular spot for events. Thinking about maybe a new building for harbor offices, new washrooms, boater facilities, maybe a shade a stage structure that's attached it. Obviously, the restaurant remains. Suggestions for improving maybe the edge of that restaurant and the edge of its patio space, landscape, et cetera. Let's go to the next slide. Then for Pete Peterson, we are reorganizing parking to try and carve out as much boat and trailer parking as we can while keeping car trailer parking as well. Protecting the parking that's at the existing ball diamond, trying to create as much green and buffer space as we can. Creating a nice landscaped area between the parking lot and the adjacent condo, between the parking lot and the road edge, obviously trying to build on the wonderful work that's already happened there with the beach and the new pavilion and the water and the washroom. If we go to the next slide and you'll see the speech bubbles down the side, which you probably gathered or some of the things that we've heard from the community along the way. And when we talk about the elements like shade structures, or if there's opportunities for more washrooms, we're thinking of them really as jewels in the landscape, beautiful architectural pieces. We go to the next slide. With the central lawn, a place for casual seating and also events like maybe movie night. We go to the next slide. What the edge between the restaurant and at the town dock and the rest of the space might look like, what the landscape edge, how the landscape edge might be configured. We go to the next slide. We also set out to understand all things boating related and, and looked in particular to the cruise lines and have some suggestions for continuing to market Midland as a great destination for cruises. The next slide, the events, we have had some terrific conversations over the past few months trying to understand the whole host of events that happen on the waterfront. And we're working again with town staff to make sure that whatever we're doing here is reflected in the overarching tourism strategy. And the next slide. Then we, the look, the sixth component is looking at the phenomenal base of natural heritage that really is one of the things that Midland is recognized most for. Want to make sure that it's protected. We want to make sure that residents play a part in acting as great stewards of their water's edge property and taking every opportunity we can to restore habitat and naturalize that shoreline. We go to the next slide. The seventh component that we looked at was looking at direction for development. So you have, along with Midland Bay Landing, some fantastic development proposals that are in various stages of approval. The official plan already sets some great direction for protecting views through to the waterfront to make sure that development isn't a wall to the waterfront. And you know how to do this because you've done that, this in the south and in Bayport where there's waters, trail connections, there's ways through to the trail. And so we just want to make sure that that continues to happen. So on the next slide, we have some suggestions, some guidelines that might be considered as the development applications come forward for review. So to just make sure that they're permeable. There's ways through those developments to make sure that there's a beautiful interface between the adjacent development and the water's edge. To take every opportunity to have that development face, focus, and feature the waterfront, not turn its back to the water's edge. And then the last component is wayfinding and signage. And that's one of the things I feel most passionate about on all my waterfront master plans. I want to know where I should go, how I get there, what the opportunities are, put it all together. And there are just some terrific examples of communities that are doing great jobs on this. And we know that you're already underway with implementing some trail markers and signage. And so we want to build on that work and augment it. So the final slide is just bring it all together. So we're looking at, looking at the waterfront through eight lenses. And together, when we bring it all together, is what we're putting forward as the waterfront, as the Midland waterfront master plan. Thank you for that, so we could stop sharing.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Before I open the floor for questions, I'm going to read the motion and ask for a mover and a seconder. Let's staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-five dash one oh six waterfront master plan draft one release dated November fifth, twenty twenty-five. And PowerPoint presentation presented by Donna Hind, Principal of the Planning Partnership, be received for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor McDonald and I'm sorry. And Counselor Major. Okay, we have any questions or comments? And remembering that this is received for information. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. First of all, I'd just like a comment on the example of the Burlington pictures. I noticed there were no geese in your pictures. When we did meet and I, I asked if we would consider including parking areas for McCullough Park, and I didn't see that included, so hopefully you can revisit that. And my question is Central Marine, you've got it identified as private.
Yeah.
There's no recommendation on whether that should remain private or not.
Maybe I should turn the, Thomas, do you want to weigh in on that or? But I take your point, we have, we have talked about it all through this exercise. And I, I am understanding the conditions of the lease and the, and the implications of that piece relative to Midland Bay Landing. And so I take your point and I will continue to talk to the town staff team about that.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Prost, to Counselor McDonald. So there is an existing lease in place and we understand that that lease allows the Central Marine to continue to operate for a number of years. And that's what that's reflected, is that the time horizon for this master plan, Central Marine will be there.
Clarification, you say when the final master plan comes forward, the marina will be addressed? Is that what you said?
No, my apologies. Let me clarify. So the, the horizon of this master plan doesn't go as far as the lease. So Central Marine's lease is longer than sort of the life cycle for this master plan. Usually these master plans are reviewed between five to ten years. And they will stay there. They have the right to stay there even longer than that.
Thank you. Now I understand. If I may, I just have one other comment. I'm glad you addressed the the locations for access waterfront at the end of Curry Road and Puttycomb Road. And you, you actually exposed one to me that I, I haven't found it yet. It's the one at Glenbrook Gardens. I'll have to find that one. I'm surprised I can't. But thank you for the very thorough presentation and I don't know if it's possible to request a paper copy of it or not. Okay, I'm getting headaches. Yes. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I actually really liked the town dock plan. I think that we've been focusing a lot on Midland Bay as a community hub and we haven't really thought about the town hall and that, or sorry, the town dock in that way. I really liked that redesign and what could be done there and kind of a more community hub feel that we're, we're trying to make it kind of a makeshift event space right now. And, and your plan showed that it could be a lot more, so I really liked that. And I appreciated that you wanted to connect the trail and promote active transportation along Bay Shore Drive. I put in a request at budget to see a pedestrian crosswalk there, so I'm hoping that as well. So I was glad to see that in there and we need to identify more as your plan suggests. But hopefully that's a stepping stone to what your plan has started. So thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Do you have a follow-up, Counselor McDonald?
Thank you for understanding. I neglected to ask or make the comment about your wayfinding signages. Our Midland Active Transportation Committee has been working very hard at erecting some of those, those signages. I think they're working on it. So I will bring that recommendation forward to the Midland Active Transportation Committee.
Fantastic.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I've been looking forward to this plan. It was a good, I think it was an hour-long chat we had.
Yes, it was. Yes.
We wandered all over the map, literally.
Yes, we did. Yes.
It's validating to see that things that I was, you know, observing or concerned with seem to be echoed by the other respondents. And I know we had a lot of input from the community on this, so big thanks and shout out to the community for participating in this. And it wasn't just an eye-rolling exercise, others counsel with another consultant, you know, talking about the future. There's a few pictograms that are depicted here and ideas I just wanted to call out just quickly because I'm sure I'll probably get an email from the boathouse by the time I get home going, hey, where's, where's the parking? What do you mean you're going to turn it into an event space? Where are my customers going to park? So these are just creative ideas. None of these are, you know, directly actionable other than wayfinding signage. That just makes sense. And also the reality of our, our Pedersen Park. Unfortunately, just geographically, it's the bottom of the bay. It's the kind of the catch basin as the wind blows and tends to be closed more than it's open for swimming. These days, it wasn't always the case. It used to be quite a nice place to swim. It's a beautiful beach, but one of those ones where nobody from here would swim there, put it that way. So that's not just the geese problem, but it just that things blow into the bottom of the bay. So there's, we have some challenges because we, we lack the ability to interface with the water. And we're a waterfront community, so it is quite kind of depressing actually sometimes. And to your point as well, that one little beautiful sandy beach beside the grain elevator, which is usually home to an encampment these days, is beautiful waterfront and is safe to swim in as long as there's no commercial shipping activities. But when they come in, you don't in the water because they've got thrusters going and, you know, slice and dicey in no time. So
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, there's, there's, we have some challenges because of the public and private nature of our waterfront. And I thought you, you did a great job on this summarizing what it could be and sort of plant some seeds with us on easy winds, the low-hanging fruit if you wish. And other things that we can integrate as, as plans formulate for Midland Bay Landing and, and you know, what, what transpires from that RFP that's currently out. So super glad to see this. Hopefully the community looks at this and, you know, starts to dream about what we can do and phased approach to it and how it all intertwines. As we continue to make significant investments in capital to extend and maintain our trail system. You know, and, and make it more accessible, realizing that we also can't really police it to the point. You know, we can put rules around speeds and what kind of vehicles travel on it, but no bylaw has no ability to enforce it and the OPP won't. So it's really on our system. So those are some challenges we're facing too. So it's going to probably involve more barriers, P-gates and things like that to really try and keep our trail system used by the intended demographic rather than as a, an alternative to the roads for the newly electrified and things we have driving all over town. So anyway, this is really, really neat. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it through to its end and watching either on council or as a resident, this come to fruition over the, over the next decade or two. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Major.
The one thing I was hoping that you would have caught on to, but when you're walking along Bay Shore Avenue, and then we got the lookout. Like a hundred-year-old
I did hear
that are, it's, it's scrub poplar and really needs to be cleaned out because people park and can't see anything.
Yes, yes. And I, I believe I heard that from some of members of council, so thank you for that. That is something we will make note of. Because the lookout is beautiful. It's a beautiful promontory. Thank you.
I don't see any, oh, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Prost. It is nine o'clock. Here we go again. Thank you very much for the the document, very thorough and a lot of great ideas. I liked, you know, when you, when you don't have a, an actual space like the Pete Peterson Park parking area for boaters. It's, you know, and then you get a conceptual drawing and it's all cleaned up with parking spaces. It looks fabulous. You got nothing really to, to complain about, but yeah, that wow, let's, let's go forward and try to get that done. And then you look at the harbor and then and then wow, now, you know, like to Mayor Gordon's point, that the boathouse doesn't have parking and we have more green space and we just had a parking study done and, and I'm like, whoa, maybe I'm not so fond of that one. But, but again, it's conceptual and it's not carved in stone. And, and, but I appreciate the report and I did, I didn't know at the end of Midland Point Road or at the very end, that was town-owned property. That's the only one that I didn't know about. So if we can incorporate some of those sitting areas, those great ideas those not so advertised spots, that would be great too. But thank you very much for the, the information and
Just to clarify before it spins out and I get people rioting at the meeting, there is lots of parking still at the town dock and there is, parking is maintained behind the, the restaurant. And I, I bet you'd be, I bet everyone has in their mind's eye that beautiful waterside restaurant that you go to when you're vacationing or on holidays. And you're probably not sitting in the restaurant looking out over car bumpers to the beautiful pristine water in the distance. So we worked, we worked hard to try and balance, to try and give you a balance of places for the amazing events that the town does such a great job hosting, more green space at the water's edge, but not forgetting about the need to have to provide parking. But you know, landscape architect, I will always choose green over car bumpers wherever I can. But I tried to balance it here. So I think just looking at the fine print and I think we have like a hundred and thirty-five-ish parking stalls still at the town dock. So lots of places for the restaurant patrons to park.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Unfortunately, with growth, we're going to need more parking and green space for sure. We have, you know, as a landscape architect, that, those parking grids with green and I guess I'm a little confused because right behind the boathouse, the boathouse actually owns that property unless we're going to yank it away.
No, no, we did details, but we did. details, but we did, we have been looking at this whole area in quite a lot of detail with our town staff team. So we'll provide, we'll make sure we're super clear on this when we come out to our next public session.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. So I'm echoing what previous council members have said regarding that green space by the town dock.
Yeah.
There's, I, I believe there is an existing smaller area where they do some performances. I think it's during different events that the town holds. But to take away parking, that would become a little risky. There is I believe there is more green space as you go towards on the waterfront's edge, which offers a better view. And there is some public benches where that
Is, yeah.
Flying gooses or flying
Yeah, 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 there is.
I don't know what it is. Is it a loon? I don't know. Or is it a goon? I don't know. It's a swan. Okay. So the flying swan and that, that specific spot offers better water view than creating a green space where where you're recommending because the gazebos and all that would be still blocking the view if you created green space there. So it's a great idea, but I, I believe it's location is wrong. The green space can be utilized where existing green spaces. But again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're learning, you know, parks that we didn't know about. So
There you go.
You know, so and the, the problem we have in Midland is all the parks are underutilized. Possibly. That's why we have these problems everywhere. And because the other communities have better beaches, our residents tend to go, go there. So the traffic in Midland parks is way less. And from what I know, I think one in four resident, our house owners in Midland owns a boat. So they I, I, because everyone I talk, oh, I got a boat, I got a boat. So again, the parks are underutilized because people have access to a boat and go wherever they want. But thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Just it bears worth repeating because Counselor Major did bring up that valid point that our lookout is anything but. But as council knows, but just to reiterate to the public, the remediation that will need to take place on the acres of Midland Bay Landing is, you know, at minimum calls for a meter of fill basically to be capping off all of the pollutants that are on that land from its former industrial life, which will require, I'm sure, clear cutting that. So this is an old growth forest and I know there's probably some people grabbing their pearls right now on Facebook, going to let me have it. Because I get beat up all the time about trees getting cleared for development in town on land we don't own, but this is land we do own. And this is one where we've been super upfront and clear that those trees for the most part are probably all going to be brought down as part of whatever amazing development ends up there. So there will be a lookout again sometime in probably the next five or six years. So no chainsaws buzzing at any time soon, but it, it is coming. So to Counselor Major's point and all those who like to go sit there with a coffee and look at the trees, you'll be able to look at sailboats and powerboats going by and gaze at the water's edge. But it is going to take us a few years to get this right. So coming soon, a lookout. In the meantime, continue to enjoy the east park because that's where everyone goes instead.
Yes, yes.
I don't see any further questions or comments from council. I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, twelve point three CSR twenty twenty five dash one oh four Culture and Tourism, Tourism Division twenty twenty five year end report. Karen Mealing, manager of Culture and Tourism will provide a PowerPoint presentation. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you and good evening, members of council. I'm pleased to present the Culture and Tourism Division's year end report to you. You'll have already received the staff report and the state of culture report and all of our post event reports. And I'll provide a brief highlight to some of our projects and initiatives from this year. And Counselor Ball, I heard your comments earlier. So thank you very much for that. It's been a very exciting year and with filled with multiple events, activities and ways to enjoy Midland for both those who live here and those who are visiting. So next slide, please. So we started our year with a familiarization tour. We invited customer facing staff from the attractions and the accommodations as well as the BIA and the Chamber of Commerce. And we visited multiple attractions and it's just giving them that high level information to help answer questions from visitors and enhance their experience with us. We couldn't visit Georgian Bay on this National Park on that same day because it's just too far. So we went to visit them in June. Next slide, please. Now, the Public Works Palooza is not our event to organize, but we do have a booth there where we hand out coloring pages highlighting our upcoming events. We also have promotional material about our upcoming events. We also hand out treats and this year we gave out three hundred and fifteen butter tarts and a hundred and eighty Rice Krispie treats and we ran out. So I'm going to have to buy more butter tarts for next year. Next slide, please. The kids fishing derby is the first Saturday in June. And this year we had four hundred children participate and they brought their parents and grandparents and guardians with them. Every child receives a participation prize as well as a ticket to enter into a draw to win one of eleven bikes or scooters. And we also have some great community support there. We have the fire department, the Y Marsh SSEA. And they also get free barbecue lunch. Next slide, please. Ontario's Best Butter Tart Festival presented by Chapman's. This is the town's signature event or a top one hundred festival and events in Ontario. We were very excited this year to partner with Chapman's as our presenting sponsor. And this year they used the festival to launch their super premium plus butter tart ice cream. They went through fifty five of those large tubs, giving out free samples all day. That's about three thousand fifty scoops of ice cream. And they'll be back next year with a new ice cream. We received four hundred and thirty four vendor applications for the twenty twenty five festival. We can only accommodate about two hundred and thirty vendors. Takes us days to go through their vendor applications. We opened the application process for twenty twenty six on September eighteenth at five PM. By the next morning, we had eighty completed applications. We're already sitting at about two hundred and fifty applications and the deadline to apply isn't till January. So it's like we'll have the same popularity. It's nice that we know that other vendors are recommending our festival to other vendors because they comment that our staff are organized, we're quick to respond and it's a, it's a great day. Next slide, please. Our Canada Day Festive, oh, next slide, please. Our Canada Day festivities draw residents as well as residents from neighboring municipalities and cottagers. They enjoy the civetans parade. We have music all day at the stage. We have vendors. We have children's activities and entertainment. And this year will be our, this year Penitent Machine hosted the fireworks. The next year will be our turn. And now that we've got the stage with the lights, we're hoping to keep the entertainment going into the evening while people gather in the park to wait for the fireworks to start. And maybe we'll keep a few of the food trucks there as well. So people get a, a treat while they're waiting. Next slide, please. Music in the park. So we offered eight weeks of music, live music in the park on Sunday evenings. We had about two hundred to five hundred musicians, bands, sorry, two hundred to five hundred visitors. And then we hired about thirteen bands and musicians to perform for us. And we received very positive feedback from the bands that were there and the musicians about this new stage and the roof. They really liked it. Next slide, please. Tall ships Midland, tall ships visit Midland every three years. And what was very special this year is that one of our ships, the Empire Sandy offered sail outs on Georgian Bay. We were able to offer these tickets. They sold out well in advance. And between selling those tickets as well as the tickets for the daily deck passes where visitors could board the vessels, tour them, learn, meet the crew, we raised seventy seven thousand five hundred dollars in ticket sales to help support this event. The weekend also included Rib Fest and we had a midway off the harbor parking lot. The Tourism Regional Economic Impact Model indicated that the economic impact of this event was nearly ten million dollars. It was a very busy weekend at the waterfront. Next slide, please. Very special opportunity was presented to us this year and that was to include the Canadian Armed Forces, Air Forces, Snowbirds. It was a spectacular September afternoon, perfect weather and all the residents and neighboring residents, residents that gather around the waterfront were treated to a spectacular show. And yes, we're hoping to bring them back for our Sesquicentennial in twenty twenty eight. We're already talking to them. Next slide, please. And just a few days later, we had the mayor's charity golf tournament. And this year we raised with the support of the players, sponsors and donations for the silent auction table, we raised more than forty eight thousand dollars for the community grant program. So please mark your calendars for September eleventh, twenty twenty six, and we'll try to exceed that amount. Okay, next slide, please. We hosted the Midland Mural Festival towards the end of September. And this was the second year of this event and it's grown in popularity as well. We have live music all day. We had artisan vendors. We had a couple, we had five organizations that were offering free make and take activities where they're engaging with the public, which is really nice to, to have for our community. I offered three tours of the murals and I had about ten to twenty people and people were just gathering as I got joining as I walked up the street. So it was really nice to see that and really enjoyed learning about the murals. Yeah. Next slide, please. So this is year, the staff worked to dissolve the cultural lines for the end of April. But without, and we didn't have a budget for cultural programming, but we were still able to offer a few programs with no associated cost of events, some staff time. So the Indigenous Art and Cultural Awareness Week has been happening. This was the fourth year. And it's primarily free activities that are celebrating Indigenous art, culture, music, food. And we've been doing this for a few years. So and actually we've been drawing visitors from throughout the province who have come to attend this week. Next slide, please. Culture Days is a national initiative where it features free or pay what you make cultural programs for a number of days. This year it was from September twenty eighth, sorry, September nineteenth to October twelfth. And we allowed anyone who was in North Simcoe hosting one of a free event that was culturally related to add to our hub. We had about twenty activities posted this year. Also, you'll notice the staff report has a state of culture report attached to it. And that didn't, you know, demonstrates the important role that municipal cultural programming is missed as well as cultural tourism can play for our community. Midland's municipal cultural GDP for twenty twenty three was twenty two point nine million dollars. So something we certainly want to continue to grow and invest in. Next slide, please. Third party events range from large events like Rib Fest and the Santa Claus Parade to community barbecues and charity walks. This year we received twenty eight applications from third party event organizers. Our role is to review their application, make sure it's suitable to take place on municipal property and that it's safe to do so. If they need a little bit of guidance from us, we'll provide it to them as well because we certainly want to see their events grow and succeed. Next slide, please. Mural restoration. So in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, we've restored sixteen murals in the downtown. And it's been so nice to be able to see them come back and add color and vibrancy to the downtown. In the one for the library stable, just to let you know, that's the one that's on the far right. I didn't realize there was a little girl in that mural till they restored it, the one in the little blue dress. That's how badly painted they were. We still have a few more to do. So prepare yourself. There'll be a budget request. Uh, next slide, please. Just to let you know, we, to beautify the harbor when the tall ships happened and when the cruise ships came in, and just for general everyday use, everyday visitors. We had these banners put up on all the three pavilions. They highlight the attractions in Midland, but also what makes Midland a great place to, to live and visit. Next slide, please. The harbor and boat launch. So our staff at the harbor provide excellent customer service to seasonal and transient boarders. They take care of the upkeep and maintenance of the harbor building, property, grounds and piers. There was a slight decrease in seasonal occupancy this year, but we also saw an increase in not the number of days where we had transient voters visiting Midland. Next slide, please. The Promis visited us eleven times this year. While they're here, they visit local attractions and they're paying admission fees at that time as well. You'll also see them walking in the downtown. Each time we have the Promis in, we have local vendors. So they have to be from Midland, Penitent Machine, Tanya or both the First Nation. And they're there selling one of a kind handmade items that they can purchase as souvenirs. Next slide, please. We had some capital projects that we completed for the harbor and boat launch. So the new floating boat docks of boat launch are installed. The photo just shows that one's done, but they've both been completed. At the harbor, the tiles and the shower floors were replaced, two fifty amp pedestals were installed. The rub rails were completed and the new electrical switch panel was installed. And at the end of the season this year, we, a couple of the docks were removed for refurbishment and they'll come back in the spring when it's time to reopen this harbor. Next slide, please. Our division has multiple ways of securing funds to support our, our activities, including the municipal accommodation tax. So there was a report this evening on how the county utilized the mat that was collected to twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Some of the town's portion of the mat was allocated to the five year strategic tourism strategy, sorry, which will be presented to council in March. The survey is still open till Friday of this week. So if someone hasn't completed it yet and they do want to, please go online. You can find it on the engagement link page. As a tourism strategy will identify ways that the mat might be utilized, proposed projects for the mat collected in twenty twenty five won't be coming to council as part of budget twenty twenty six in December, but rather in March, with the exception of the portion that we allocate to staff wages. Next slide, please. Additional sources for funding for us are grants and sponsorships. We apply for numerous, numerous grants and we have a high level rate of success. We also created a sponsorship package with all of our events and sponsorships opportunities, and we were able to actually increase our sponsorships this year. So these are all the sponsors and grants that we received this year. If you combine the mat grants and sponsorships, we brought in more than two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. If you add in vendor fees and sales for tall ships, tickets and butter tarts, that increases to nearly four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Our web pages for tourism and culture and all of our events are the most visited on the town's website. We're constantly updating them with more event information. We also have the Ontario's Best Butter Tart Festival and Midland Tourism Facebook and Instagram accounts that we manage. Next slide, please. So some of our wins for twenty twenty five was, were increasing the sponsorships, which remove some of the burden from the tax base. We increased our media reach, which can, sorry, which can translate into an increased visitation and an economic impact for the community. It was a very busy and exciting summer. Tall ships only happens every three years. The Butter Tart Festival was a great success again. It was very special to have the snowbirds visit us. Now our events are growing in popularity and attendance. We're doing a good job getting the word out. People enjoy our events and they're coming back again. However, moving forward, the lesson learned, we want to avoid having everything on the same weekend. This year with having tall ships, Rib Fest in a midway, even though we were running free shuttles and there's parking in the downtown, there's a lot of congestion down there. So we do want to try to not have everything at the same time. And also as some of our events are growing at Harborside Park, maybe moving a few things or starting new events in Little Lake Park as well. It's a beautiful venue. We should probably be utilizing it a little bit more. So going into twenty twenty six, we're looking at moving the music in the park just from Sunday evenings to Wednesdays. We also want to start programming two weeks earlier in June and have ten weeks of music in the park. We will look at, be looking at amalgamating the tugboat and mural festivals, both their budgets and all the activities and creating a new festival. We're using the working title of Georgia Bay Waterfront Festival. And as mentioned, the tourism strategy will be coming to council in March. And pending budget approval may be some other projects that we're working on in twenty twenty six. So thank you for your time and I'm, if there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you for that presentation, Karen. That was great. We've had a great twenty twenty five. So before I open the floor for questions or comments, I'm going to ask for a mover in a second or Counselor Major and Counselor Meredith. But staff report CSR dash twenty twenty five dash one oh four Culture and Tourism Division twenty twenty five year end report dated November fifth, twenty twenty five and PowerPoint presentation presented by Karen Mealing, manager of Culture, Culture and Tourism to be received for information. And I believe Counselor Major has a first question.
That was a great report. So I was at Butter Tart Festival volunteering and I handed out nine hundred of those looks like a postcard that you wanted everyone to scan and send back in. And then it's like, oh, we're going to give product away. Well, it'd be nice if next year when I hand out a thousand, I can at least name the product because you're telling them, oh, you can win product. They go, well, what can we win? And I'm a counselor and I go, I don't know. I'm like, I haven't got a clue. They won't tell me. So that's something we can look at for next year. And then a bunch of the parents with younger kids were pretty ticked off that. financially, they couldn't go on the ships, but then you had it barricaded off. So I don't know if it was the town barricaded it off or the tall ships. But all they wanted to do is walk their, their small kids down to have a closer look at the, at the boat. So I don't know if you got an answer for that or not.
Through the Chair to Councillor Major. So about the Butter Tart Festival, they were visitor surveys and we do a Heart of Georgia Bay prize pack, which has a variety of items, but we can certainly list what they are for next year. In terms of the Butter Tart, sorry, the tall ships, we're under Transport Canada regulations when we have the tall ships in and they require us to fence off that area. We have to barricade it. And we don't have a say in how we allow people through. I know some people didn't want their bags checked as well. We don't have a say in that. We are required by Transport Canada to do that.
But at least if they got someone there that explained to the people, like that's why you can't come down instead of you can't come down. And the only other comment I got is I walk Bay Shore Avenue a lot. And I don't know if this is tourism or what it is, but they used to have up there, like you'd walk along and, and they, they'd have signs up with play for, play for, or shipyards or all that. So I reached out to two or three specialists around town. I couldn't get it fixed. But, but when you walk up and you want to read the history of Midland, it's just take the old stuff off because you can't even read it. Like there's nothing you can read, but we got them sitting out there. So when you walk along and, and like if I go to some other town, they got something to read, I usually try and read it with my limited education, but up there you can't read them. So I'm just hoping by next year, when the nice weather comes and you got a lot of people walking, they can read those, those history of Midland. That's it.
Through the Chair to Councillor Major, every time we have an event, just go back to the first question, comment. We do a post-event wrap-up and we make our comments. So we have already identified that we need to have better signage when we, where we have the fenced area at tall ships. So for 2028, that will definitely be in place. In terms of the signage you're talking about, I believe the Heritage Committee is looking at that. Could you please repeat the question?
So when you walk along Bay Shore, they got the things up there. You can stop and read and it says like, this is where the Midland Shipyards, this is where the coal docks all the way along. But I reached out to, I don't know how many staff and I, and it's like, they never got changed. But if, if you can't read them, just go up and take them off and leave them blank. Because that's annoying when you go up and you want to read it and you can't read it. So just take it off or either put new ones in or just get rid of the, get rid of the stuff you can't read.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post, through you to Councillor Major. So the Heritage Committee did discuss these signs along the waterfront as well. Those signs, we believe, were installed by the Huron Museum some years ago. And I believe we had conversations with Mitch and his team about the Trails Master Plan and about seeing if those signs can get updated as part of that program. But I believe there's no current, there's not currently a program in place that we can replace those signs with.
Then at least go up and take the faded ones out. Play it, like don't have stuff in there. It's of no use. Just take the faded ones out, just leave it blank. That way people won't know what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Major. We'll coordinate with Mitch's team and, and operations to see if we can get those pulled.
Councillor East.
Thank you. First of all, great job, Karen. You know, that extra employee really, really helped out large. So it's great to see the satisfaction from that. Just had a quick question about if we were able to table for next summer. I, I didn't speak with anybody about it through budget yet, about the possibility of a King Street Car Show and Boat Show. Is that something that we're still looking at for next season?
Through the Chair to Councillor East, that's coming forward, I believe, as another councillor is making that request for a car show in the downtown. And as part of the tugboat festival and the new Georgian Bay Waterfront Festival, if the tugs aren't interested, we could have antique boats or we could have a combination of the two.
Councillor, Councillor Ball.
Thank you. I was jumping the gun earlier. I was excited about Mural Fest, so. Great job on Mural Fest. The first to second was a huge difference. It was really engaging to the community. I did hear a lot of people say they didn't know it was happening still, so maybe we get the word out sooner than later. I know sometimes we do like a week before and it's maybe not enough advertising. People don't see it as much, so just food for thought for next year. I do like the combination of Mural Fest and Tugboat Fest together. And maybe an addition of an MC for Tugboat Fest. I know Quest Art has their annual fundraising night and they have like a really fun and engaging MC that, you know, talks about the artwork. And I think that would be a kind of a fun thing to see as the boats are going around, like a more, just an engaging show. I like that we've had third-party events. Those have been great. I would like to see, I know I bring this up every year, collaborating with our local third-party events that maybe just need some help with Midland. I know I was sad to see that Brookside Music didn't have their World Music Event, because that was one of the most phenomenal events I've attended and it was really well-attended. And especially when we're dissolving the Cultural Alliance to promote culture in other ways, that would have been the perfect opportunity for Midland to step up and give them a hand to be able to run that event. So I would like to see that collaboration continue if we can. And I just had a question about the, the Sunday night music in the park being moved. Why is that?
Through the Chair to Councillor Ball, our staff, in terms of moving the music in the park, our staff work a lot of weekends already for all of our events. We give up a lot of, we give up stat holidays. When we have to work eight nights throughout the summer as well, on Sunday nights, that's overtime for my staff. We're also, if it's not good weather, we're communicating with the bands earlier in the day. So if I move this to during the week, we're not giving up all of our weekends. We're already giving up a number of them. It gives them a chance to flex their hours as well, start later in the day. We start communicating with the bands in the afternoon. We'll still, there's an organization that I'm seeing that they might want to take over the Sunday nights. So we would have Wednesday nights ourselves. The library would probably still have their movies in the park on the Thursdays. And then if we could get this other group to do Sunday nights, then it just takes the pressure off of our staff.
I think that's exactly what I'm meaning by collaborating with other local organizations. So I, I think that's great. Because I do think that Sunday night is well-attended because it's Sunday night. It's a nice like end to the weekend. Kind of puts like a family, like Sunday nights back into the community. So I think to move it during the week, it's just not going to have the same feel. So I really liked the feel of that Sunday night and I would hope that continues. So I'm glad to hear that you have approached somebody else for that.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post, and thank you for the report. Very, very pleased with, with, with everything. A lot of, you, you've been busy, you and your staff and to bring in $440,000, which is, which is nice to hear. And even to, you know, increase in sponsorship over 2024 is 14%. So, so working hard, doing, doing a good job. The one thing that I, I think we discussed at Ottawa, we were in AMO our first night and we were, we had this fabulous firework display. And hey, wasn't it amazing? And we were thinking, you know what, this, what would it cost? And I don't need a, no right now, but just, just throw the idea of just, you know, nothing, nothing against Penetang, but just that, that's, we have a beautiful park. We have setting, we have Music Canada Day, you're bringing the music at night. Wouldn't it be great to just end it off every year with, with our own fireworks, bring it back there? So it's something to think about. Would be great. And the only other thing was, my concern was about the Sunday night thing, as Councillor Ball said, so let's take that away. It is that family gathering night. So if we can get someone else to take that over, that would be great. But overall, great job. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks, Karen, and your team. Incredible work. I mean, when people think about the core mission of this corporation and the municipality, you know, its sidewalks and roads and cutting grass and, you know, plowing snow and making sure the water flows and it's clean. And when you flush the toilet, that unclean water goes somewhere, gets cleaned and put into the bay. They just think about those things typically. And, you know, yeah, we, we have, we fund the library, the airport, all these other agencies, boards and commissions, but the arts and culture. You know, I think when the Cultural Alliance kind of fizzled out, there might have been a sense that, you know, that wasn't important to us and that it wasn't a big deal in our community. But, you know, which, that's not true. Just that little organization just didn't seem to get its legs under it. But look at what your tiny little team has been able to pull off. And you meet, this isn't just this year. You do this year after year. So when people ask, you know, like, where's our tax money go? And I get that question all the time and it's probably going to come up again tonight when we do our, our budget presentation. These kind of things is what brings people to Midland and why they stay in Midland. We have the tourism that comes from all over the place to enjoy these amazing festivals that you guys stand up year after year. We're recognized as a top 100 festival in the province, for heaven's sake. And we do this on relatively shoestring budgets and without, you know, double-digit tax increases every year to support it. We challenge you, your tiny little team, to find more sponsorship opportunities, to pursue more grants, something all of councils have been pushing for, and you've answered the call. And it's absolutely incredible to see the caliber of events that are, continue to happen in Midland and the growth that we're, we're achieving for, you know, relative trivial cost increases on our, on our taxpayers, right? All the property taxes we collect, which is really our only lever to, other than mat, we just don't have revenue sources anymore. So I'm so proud of this and, you know, this is something I'm going to be talking about well into next year. And reminding people about the municipality is far more than just the moving pieces that you see from operations and the capital stuff we have to do. It's the cultural heart of Georgian Bay that we embody here. And the only way, we can say that all day long, but your team and volunteers and residents that attend these things actually breathe life into it and make it happen and make it a reality. So I just wanted to say, thank you so much. You take critique. You take input and feedback. Every year is better. And, you know, we're planning for the big birthday, the 150th birthday Sesquicentennial. Getting the snowbirds back for that would be fantastic. And we've even talked about, you know, maybe dovetailing it onto the one event we, or we have two events now that we're going to plan the dates for. But, you know, if it was Butter Tart Day Two, Butter Tart itself would wrap up on Saturday, but whatever amazing stuff you come up with Day Two and could be finished off with the snowbirds again. This is the kind of, it's amazing that we're doing all this as a tiny little community and with such a small staff. And I know there's an army of volunteers. I don't want to downplay that. We couldn't pull it off without our volunteers. But it just, this report, I really encourage people who wonder, you know, what the heck else does Midland do other than tax us? Well, look at this. This is one of the, this is a showpiece. This is, this is what we do it for. This is driving growth. It's driving love in our community. It's the answer to the almost incessant negativity that just seems to be in society these days. These, the smile on all the kids' faces at all these events and their families just makes all of that stuff from Facebook and whatever just slide right off your back and just makes you feel so good for being part of that. So. Council, look forward to this in our budget. Some of the new, new things coming up for 2026. None of them are staggeringly expensive. The teams work really hard to find funding sources. And otherwise, they wouldn't be in there. Like, we know this is the, the last budget before election. And it, it's not the time to take your foot off the gas pedal when it comes to our arts and culture. Because that is the, that is like the beating heart of our community. And it supports all our businesses, whether they're downtown or uptown or crosstown. And it supports all of our residents and brings in tourism and, and makes people want to live here. And hopefully in the next term, we'll have houses built. Hopefully they can live here, not just want to live here, but we're working on that too. So anyway, kudos to your team. It's been a banner year. I wish that I, I didn't have to miss a couple of these events because of, you know, things like AMO in Ottawa. I missed going out in that tall ship. Was really bummed about that. But, you know, we, we work really hard in AMO to try and wrestle up and shake out, shake down the ministers and stuff for money for our community. So that's, we were there taking one for the team. But anyway, I love this report. It's worthwhile reading. Hopefully it doesn't, I hope, hopefully people will, I'm going to share it on my social media streams, encouraging people, review this, what we've done in the past year and what the plans are coming forward. Because it might help people not be so critical. I mean, that's probably a bit naive of me. There's always ways to be critical, but I really think people need to see if, and be reminded of what the amazing things that, that we do in Midland, in North Simcoe. So anyway, slow claps. Great. Awesome job.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for the clerk. Councillor Patel has declared a conflict on this. Is because we're receiving it for information, is he able to make a comment? Sorry, Councillor Patel. Thank you, Karen. That was wonderful. To be sure. Okay, Council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? None? Carried? All right, moving on. 12.4 CSR-2025-113, 2026 Budget Presentation. The PowerPoint presentation from Rhonda Bond, Chief Administrative Officer, to present. Thank you, Rhonda.
So good evening, Council and members of the public. So thank you for joining us for Midland's Draft 2026 Budget Presentation. I first want to thank everyone that was involved in this. So thank you to the senior leadership team, department managers and their staff, to the entire finance team. And a special thank you goes out to our Budget and Forecast Supervisor, Jaclyn, and our Finance Clerk, Jeffrey, for all their very hard work in getting us where we are today. So next slide, please. So tonight's presentation provides a high-level overview of the strategic plan, the operating budget, user rate, capital budget and long-term financial outlooks. Next slide, please. So our strategic plan is the roadmap for our organization as set out by council. And every new request in the 2026 budget directly ties to these priorities, ensuring our investments reflect council's direction. So next slide, please. So the operating budget. This funds the essential services our community relies on every day, from roads, parks, emergency services and more. This year, staff have been directed to maintain existing service levels and seek operational efficiencies. Our focus remains on responsible resource management and delivering value to our taxpayers. So next slide, please. So while the town provides numerous critical services that affect everyone's everyday life in Midland, we receive only a portion of the total tax that is paid each year in the property taxes. So you'll see on the screen that every property tax dollar we collect, .56, so 56 cents of the dollar is allocated to support our services. And this is down from 60 cents in 2025. Next slide, please. This slide that you see in front of you has been modified. So there are slight changes on this slide just due to updated figures. So what is in the staff report is, is outdated and we will, after the meeting today, the clerks will update the presentation online. So the 2026 Tax Supported Operating Budget has been developed to align with council's direction to maintain existing service levels as the foundation for our budget process. This table that you see on the screen does reflect our current and up-to-date numbers. And the base budget reflects the estimated cost required to continue delivering the services of our current programs today to the community incorporating inflationary pressures, prior council decisions and necessary contributions to reserves for infrastructure renewal. So the base budget that staff are presenting to council in the top there represent 1.71% increase to the tax rate. And you'll see just below, so the base budget above are the, are the values that we are presenting. are the values that we are presenting. Below are the OPP contract services that you'll see at a one point eight seven percent. We are assuming that the eleven percent that they have given us notice on will be coming forward. So, that number may change once we get the final numbers. So, the base budget serves as that starting point for the deliberations. And any proposed service level changes or new initiatives brought forward separately for council's consideration are listed there as well under new investment and service recommendations in council and committee requests. In addition, council will deliberate the budgets of agency boards and commissions of council. So, assuming that all the requests above get approved, and when the blended rate with the county, county of Simcoe taxes, the draft budget represents a five point one point two tax rate increase for twenty twenty six. So, the proposed tax rate increase represents a seven point three two, seven dollars and thirty-two cents monthly impact for each a thousand, hundred thousand a property assessment. So, next slide, please. So, user rates. Unlike the operating and capital budgets, water and wastewater services are funded entirely through user fees, not property taxes. These fees cover operational compliance, infrastructure upgrades, and emergency repairs. In twenty twenty five, Midland's annual operating cost for water and wastewater services was approximately six million, funded entirely through user rates. Excellent, please. For twenty twenty six, we're recommending a four percent increase for both water and wastewater rates. For a typical household, that means about twenty dollars more for water and twenty-two dollars more for wastewater annually. Using a model that can predict the next one hundred years, staff are recommending a small relief on water rates with a four percent increase rather than the anticipated five percent increase. Next slide, please. Thank you. The capital budget is our plan for major projects and infrastructure renewal. This budget supports the asset management of our current needs while planning for future growth. The proposed capital plan for twenty twenty six totals eight point eight million. A significant number of major multi-year projects approved previously in the term are progressing, representing over a hundred and two point five million. Funding of all these projects comes from a balanced mix of tax-supported reserves, grants, rate-supported reserves, and development charges. This approach ensures that we can deliver key projects while maintaining financial sustainability and leveraging external funding opportunities. Highlighted, highlighted here are some of the major capital activities for twenty twenty six. UV treatment replacement, a new financial system, fleet and equipment upgrades, road resurfacing, and park improvements. Each project supports council's commitment to service excellence and infrastructure renewal, ensuring Midland's assets are maintained and improved. So, this map provides a visual overview of planned capital projects across departments and throughout the town. Investments are targeted to areas of greatest need, supporting connectivity, accessibility, and long-term community growth. So, Midland's growth is supported by significant provincial grants and strategic infrastructure investments. With the potential to unlock three thousand new homes and expand water main capacity, this transformational funding is enabling us to meet future demands and ensuring our infrastructure keeps pace with development. Our long-term financial outlook is designed to ensure Midland's financial sustainability. By planning for future needs and maintaining healthy reserves, we're preparing for both opportunities and challenges ahead. The ten-year capital plan includes two hundred nine million in new capital projects with multi-year initiatives carrying forward from previous budgets. Looking at the ten-year plan each year allows us to update our funding model to best meet the needs of the town. So, this slide is a bit of a confusing slide. It is our consolidated reserve forecast. So, maintaining healthy reserves is essential for funding future projects, managing risk, and ensuring financial sustainability for Midland. The top blue line is the Midland Public Utilities Commission Reserve. The forecast drawn this reserve in twenty twenty seven through twenty twenty nine equals a total of fifteen million dollars contributed by the town towards the development of Midland Bay Landing. The green line represents our user rate reserve for water and wastewater and our generally positive balances. The yellow line represents the combined balance of development charges, reserves, and the building department reserve, which we are legislatively obligated to maintain for specific purposes. And the bottom line, the light blue line, represents our discretionary capital funds. These are the reserves that are designed to fund asset renewal and replacement. And why we contribute funds each year from our operating budget to ensure we have reserves available to properly maintain our six hundred and fifty-six million asset portfolio. The infrastructure gap identified in the asset management plan is reflected in the negative balance of these reserves, which are planned to move to the positive over the next ten years. The reserve forecast represents a sustainable path. However, the forecast is highly sensitive to changes and assumptions. In this year's budget document, council will find a complete listing of all reserves with twenty twenty five status and projected twenty twenty six balances.
Excuse me. Yes. Sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but I need to have a motion because we're going past ten P M.
Or we could end.
Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor East, Counselor Patel. That pursuant to section six point two E of Procedure Bylaw twenty twenty two dash two, council agrees to remain in session past ten P M in order to deal with the remaining items included on the agenda. All in favor? Hang on. One, two, three. That's carried. It's still carried. I apologize for that interruption.
Thank you. So, on this slide, debt financing is a significant component of the funding, the ten-year capital plan, and are carefully managed with limits guided by council and regulated by the province. Staff track annual payments on outstanding debt to ensure responsible borrowing and long-term sustainability. This approach projects Midland's financial position while considering annual affordability for taxpayers. So, this slide will show you the key dates. Tonight's presentation marks the beginning of the, of the budget public engagement period. The full budget document will be available to council and the public on November fourteenth. And on our website at www dot midland dot C A slash twenty twenty six budget. We encourage residents to participate and share their feedback, ensuring the budget reflects community priorities. Public input opportunities include a question and answer period from November fourteenth to November thirtieth, and a budget public meeting on November twenty sixth. Council deliberations are scheduled for December ninth and tenth. Slide, please. So, thank you, counsel and members of the public for the opportunity to present the draft budget. The budget reflects our shared commitment to a vibrant, sustainable Midland. And we look forward to working together to deliver on the priorities and continue building a strong future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I do want to note as well that we do have Ms. Liu, our acting CFO, and Ms. Dennis, our, our budget guru with us today. So, to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, C O Bunn. Could I have a mover and a second or? Counselor Major and Counselor Bald. I got it. The staff report CSR dash twenty twenty five dash one one three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty six budget presentation dated November fifth, twenty twenty five, be received for information. First question or comment from Counselor Patel?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Thank you for the presentation, C O Bunn. You're a close second to Phyllis for presentations tonight. Karen Mealing, third. But just looking at the presentation, one thing that, you know, struck my mind, and we all know, and we all are going to have to live with moving forward, is the OPP contracted service, which is the two percent that we always going to have to budget for. And, you know, hopefully it comes in less, but. So, you know, it's a great number we're starting with, five point one eight, and, you know, are with collaboration with staff and staff working hard to bring it down much as possible and council helping the cause to make the best decisions for the residents of Midland because, you know, seven point four one monthly is, is, you know, a quite a high number. But, you know, like our former finance minister said, just cancel Netflix. We're not going to ask our residents to do that. So, thank you again for the presentation and, you know, we're, we're going to be well below five point one eight. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. So, this year marks a change in name alone, quite frankly, as I've committed to not changing the way we do things. With the province's announcement of the, the strong mayor powers, this budget's actually supposed to be mine to bring to council. I committed to you that it's status quo. Haven't had to use any of those newfound powers. Don't plan to. However, the reality is I can't abdicate bringing forward a mayor's budget. I can't, I can't pass that, you know, power along to anybody else. It's one of the ones I'm stuck with. So. You know, I've been working with staff on this, and this has gone through many iterations. There's two schools of thought on our budget. One is to bring in everything and let council hack and slash as we do. Or put our best foot forward and, you know, still expecting there's going to be some changes, but to really, to bring in a really responsible budget. Not just because it's the election year budget, because this is the first one that's attached to me directly. As we heard earlier, you know, with some criticism, like it's the only way to really characterize it. You know, any of our previous budgets, you know, they're not, not my budgets. I'm one voice, one vote, right? So, whatever the rate was in the past term is not attributable to me directly unless you want to hang it on me. I'm, I'm just one voice on council. Council sets the budget. We collectively all approve the number. And those who follow our budget deliberations know that it doesn't come easily, and it's not a rubber stamp exercise. This one's a little different because technically, if you want to hang, hang it on me this time, you can, because it's the mayor's budget. There's, I got no defense on that one, except that we're going to do it exactly the same way we've done it in the past. The only thing is in name, it's my budget. I'm going to bring and present it, and then we're all going to deliberate and see if we can find and sharpen up the pencil even more. But the most important number on this, on this graph and any other previous graph, if you want to go back through history, isn't the blended tax rate. We, we really don't have control over that. You need to look at the, the town's increase year over year, how it paces against the rate of inflation. And that top line, two point four one percent, is a pretty amazing number to maintain our service level. And that does pace along with inflation. There are rooms for improvement, of course. The draws from Community Safety Reserve that brings that down to one point eight seven. That's well below the rate of inflation. And that's our little town not shedding services, cutting things, not gutting services, not getting rid of all of our attractions and tourism things. Not, you know, changing our service level on street plowing, et cetera. So, one point eight seven, that's the one we actually have control over to some degree, other than assessment growth. We, we partially have control over that because we approve that growth, but we can't actually get shovels in the ground, which is very frustrating, but it is the way it is. So, this number is the one that I'm prepared to be strapped on about. So, when people want to take a run at, at me on this budget, you can. But we're going to do it the same way we've always have. This council sets the, the budget that we ultimately approve. So, one point eight seven is a very respectable number. When you add on the other things, like the eleven percent increase that I've factored in here for OPP. You know, the generosity of the province after the twenty-six percent increase last year, thank you very much, Province of Ontario, which accounted to like a million-dollar increase over in one year for OPP policing with no extra services. They've now capped it at eleven percent. So, you know, I was supposed to do the happy dance when I got that email, but I, I'm not doing the happy dance. That's an absurd increase. Again, with no level of service enhancements at all and no ability to carve it back. Can't control it, can't say no to anything, just pay the bill. I won't go into the whole, yeah, we were going to save money going OPP. Well, you know, that hasn't happened, but we've factored in eleven percent increase. So, as, if, as we suspect, we're going to get an eleven percent increase, slide across, it'll come in my email, you know, in November, then we've budgeted for it already. So, there won't be sticker shock like last year where we were scrambling and emptying reserves to try and, you know, balance the budget and take out those, those violent changes to it. If by some chance, we don't get an eleven percent increase and we get less, then that number five sixty-four will change, and it will decrease. Which should be lovely, but I'm not counting on it. So, I'm bringing you, and our team is bringing council, a very responsible budget. That, the, there are some opportunities that council's aware of where we could, if we decided to, you know, use all of a million dollars that we expect is coming our way to lower the budget to really look incredible to the voters. But would that be responsible to knock four points off the budget, to have an artificially low one in the election year budget? And not contribute to our reserves? That would be wildly irresponsible. There'd be a, a small contingent that would do a happy dance, but, you know, they're not thinking, they're driving the car, looking over the hood instead of down the road. So, I will be proposing, when we debate the budget, that we take that approximately million dollars and we put half of it into a reserve where it belongs for, because we know how underfunded our, our, our reserves are through the asset management plan. And we use the other half a million to negate this reserve contributions for asset replacement, which is about, you know, two percent of our operational budget. And that will make a significant decrease, and I believe we can do that responsibly. It's one time only, because we're only getting that million dollars from this, this sale once. But it will really help because this is a really tough economic year across the country. And, and for my world, I don't care about the country. I care about Midland taxpayers. So, this is without us, this is without having any new revenue sources. And there's a way to get this number, I believe, down to probably in the three point one eight blended. Three point something blended. I really think we can do that, even though I don't have any impact on the stuff that we blend into. But our core, I think we have some options. And there'll be other decisions and other ideas that counselors have to trim the budget even more. But where I'm going with all this is we're, this budget is a mayor's budget in name alone. And so, I'm honoring the commitment that things aren't changing in the collaborative way. We're going to set the finances for the municipality. But this one, this budget will legitimately be one that initially is, I present to you, and then we all debate, hack, slash, change, add, remove, whatever we want to do with, and get to a number we can all live with. But I just want the community to know that nothing's changed with the strong mayor powers in the way that we're doing our budget processing and that we're bringing, putting our best foot forward. I know there's some things that I think can make material level changes to this budget in the, in the form of anywhere between two percent and four percent. If we want to be wildly irresponsible, we can go for, but, you know, I think we meet in the middle somewhere. And we can still fulfill the, the council and committee requests, which, you know, are not, they're rather meager in the grand scheme of our budget. And we still meet our, our requirements to fund the agencies, boards, and commissions, so we largely have no control over their budgets, other than a yes/no decision. So, that being said, counsel, I am, you know, it'd be lovely if somehow we could make our increase zero. The only way to do that is to break the piggy bank and start raiding reserves, which are already critically underfunded. So, I think the alternative is bringing forward a responsible budget that in the end, we're going to come up with a number that we can all sleep at night with and defend to the community that doesn't see service level cuts, doesn't see any wild growth. And I think the bottom line is our key Growth is the key to economic prosperity in Midland. I've been saying this the whole term. We need to grow, not crazy grow, but we need to grow responsibly. So we have consistent developer interest in our community. They all recognize the town's potential. We've been working hard to build up our, our infrastructure to support that growth. Because that's the other thing, if you don't keep up with your infrastructure, you can't support the growth, even if you want it. And this council has been approving that growth at a record pace this term. Unfortunately, we can't get the shovels in the ground. We know it's not going to be built till, you know, well into the next term. All the hard work we've done, we won't get to see until, you know, at least two more years, given the way the economy is. There's planning timelines that'll be streamlined, red tape is being cut, some of it forced upon us by the province, much of it is our own doing. Our own changing our processes, using our, our growth and planning teams' ideas. But the bottom line is the economy and consumer confidence are going to be inhibitors. Food bank use is at an all time high. People can't afford homes. We can't compel affordability. We can either approve housing or not. And then we're kind of, people would shake their head if we don't approve housing. So, in the middle of this. So cost containment is something I campaigned on and that we clearly all have because we've been pretty, pretty tight on the wallet and the spending. There's always more we could do, but I'm really proud of what this council's done for the past three budgets. And going into our last one, I have absolute faith in us. So there's the ongoing challenges with the cost of materials, supply chain cost increases based on sustained economic pressures. We can't ignore the US trade war and the impact it's having on our economy and our jobs and, and the whole supply chain. And the general cost of living and the cost of food and all things that are out of our hands. So we're going into this budget knowing full well, reading the room on what we need for our community. And I just want to sum up my comments by saying I'm, this is, these numbers I stand behind right now. I know we, I know there's opportunities to do a bit more with some, some creativeness. And then there's the, the creativeness that you're all going to bring to this, this process too. So this is collaborative and we're going to come up with a number that's responsible for a community that we can all be proud of. Regardless of whether, you know, we choose to hang our name for public office next term. So, thanks to the finance team and to all the departments for holding back on things you'd like to put in. For the meetings where you had stuff and you're like, eh, you know, is this a want or a need? I had, I haven't had to strong arm any of you on this. You all know exactly where we're at. So. Council, I can't wait till you get the binders and you can get through the weeds and the details and the public too, you'll be able to read it same time as us. And we look forward to actually having somebody come to our finance or our budget open house. Like, we've had nobody except the one drunk guy in year one, nobody on years two or three. So this is the year, for heaven's sake, if you have input, then please come to the mic. And share your ideas, your concerns, tell us what we think we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. And we're, we'll be all ears. So that's my only other thing is please, for heaven's sake, come to our budget public meeting. With some ideas. Don't put it on a comment on Facebook. Come and speak to us. Because not everyone in council reads those comments. Right? So come to our public meeting, please. That's my last plug. Thank you.
Councillor Meredith.
How did you know I had a comment? Thank you Deputy Mayor Prost and thank you for the presentation, CEO Ben. I think we just knocked a little bit off the budget today because I have on front of my, my screen, five point one eight percent blended. And you presented a five point one two percent blended. So we're already there. So we're on the right path, which I'm happy. So. The, if we're looking at the base budget and, 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 you know, listen to Mayor Gordon's comments. You know, the, you know, the OPP, the new investment on service recommendations, it looks like council and committee requests. Like some of those are pretty much, let's say somewhat fixed costs, right? We, we don't really control those costs. But what we can control is, is the base budget number, right? So about one point eight seven. And, and the fixed costs will always be there, they'll go up. And, and, and I'm, you know, I haven't seen the budget, obviously it's mayor's budget and you've probably already seen the majority of it. And, and I, and I take your word that, you know, staff has worked, worked hard to, to get this number to, to where it is. Five point one two blended. I don't like the five, so I'm pretty sure you all knew that. So I'm, I'll look forward to getting down to work on fourteenth when we get those budget binders. And drive this number down without dipping into reserves. That's not my main goal here. Looking at the capital plan or, is it capital plan? Just looking here, yeah, the ten year capital plan, twenty twenty seven, looking ahead, twenty twenty six, so twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. That graph just jumps right up. So, taking that into consideration, which we really have to look at as well. So, or to maintain our reserves while being, you know, responsible and, and as Mayor Gordon said, and making sure that the town's operating. You know, smoothly. I think with a little bit more, you know. Cutting, we, we can attain a, a good number after, you know, going into actually the new year. So I'm glad that we're doing budget, you know, early December and we could put that to rest and to bed. And we, we can enjoy our holidays without this hanging over our heads like as in the last three years, which bothered me. So happy to get this started. Thank you very much and look forward to it.
Councillor Major.
Okay, I gotta go at this at a different angle. So round town this year, Young Streets got done and the infrastructure was a hundred and some years old. Allen Streets got done, new sidewalks on Midland Avenue and First Street and Angela Schmidt. So for the people that don't really get out of Midland, it's awesome to live in Midland, to see all the, all the improvements we're making. Because I'm talking to people from outer town and they're going, well, you guys are doing so much in Midland, you're making it better. And I know councillor Meredith wants to keep the taxes down to nothing, but it can't be. So I'm pretty proud, pretty happy and pretty impressed that we're getting stuff done in Midland. We'll try and keep the taxes low as we can. But people got to get out of town and go to other towns and see where things are crumbling, they're not doing anything. I mean, I've already made the point up in Ottawa, the sidewalks you can hardly walk on. And we're getting new sidewalks in our town. So, yes, we'll watch how much the taxes are going up. But people got to be happy to live here and to see how much improvements we're making in the town.
Any more? Mayor Gordon, you have a follow up?
Yeah, so I should just add with the, the capital forecast, the, the capital stuff is, that's the expensive things. Like really, our operational budget is pales by comparison of our capital budget. And we already know through the asset management planning that was forced upon us by the province, but that's actually one of the best things they've done. Because nobody, nobody can feign ignorance anymore about how critically underfunded our, our, all of our capital assets are. So now everybody in the province knows, all of the dirty laundry's out there, the municipalities have just not put away, they're in bad shape. You look at our municipality, you know, we, to your point, we pull, like, we're still doing it, King and Allen. We've suffered some setbacks because the pipes aren't in the spots where they're supposed to be, they're too shallow. You know, every time we dig, expecting it to be six feet down, it's two feet. Like, we've, we've had setbacks along here, but that's to be expected when you're dealing with these really old infrastructure. Yeah. So we're still working on it, but it'll be done. But, you know, this term, this municipality has secured record amounts of funding. I mean, I don't want to sound like Trump here, but like nobody's got more funding than we have. We got over thirty million dollars for our wa- water wastewater upgrades. This is like life changing money. We got the same kind of money that Mrs. Saga got, for heaven's sake. And, you know, this isn't just because, you know, I, I text the, the premier and wish him happy birthday. Like, our staff work really, really hard to make sure that we, we pursue every grant opportunity there is and we, we do it well. You look at municipalities that have applied over and over and over again and still don't get the money. So, we are, we are absolutely killing it. So we, we got to make sure we're, keep all this in focus. The only reason we're able to do these things, to a large degree, it's not taxation. God, we'd have twenty percent tax increases if we really wanted to fund this, sell this capital stuff. Is because of the grant money that we pursue and we'd be successful at getting from the province. Thirty eight million dollars and counting in grants this term. So it's that, that grant money that's really made is driving the bus because we don't have the growth, right? We're approving the growth, but people are largely not building yet because for all the reasons I listed earlier, just the economy's crap. Developers are going bankrupt, you know, they just, so just folding up shop, like the economy is really, really hurting. And yet we're somehow managing to pull this off without making tax rate increases of ten percent, thanks to these grants. So as we see the houses and it, it's not just houses, it's commercial stuff that we're approving too. As we see that actually getting built over the next four to six years, as the economy starts to get better, which it will. It's just going to take some time. Then, and only then, will you start to see some of these, you know, really high numbers funded with, with increased tax revenue. Right? As our assessment increases because we have more people living here in new homes. Then we're going to be better and, and the, we can spread the costs of running this municipality across more ratepayers. If we don't grow and our costs continue to, to increase, which they do, just cost of living increases for staff and unions, everything else. Then our, our, our tax rates will just continue to climb. We have to grow. Growth is the key. And we get this, it's part of our strategic plan is growing. And, you know, we've been approving stuff, not just rubber stamping approving, there's, we have some tough questions. And we really grill the developers and, and our planning folks really beat them up in the site plan process after we do zoning changes. But we are being bold. Did our first MZO. You know, to, to, and that's going to be hundreds of new homes, including rentals and Habitat for Humanity is going to be built in there. Like, there's just so many cool things that are, that are, we're, we're approving, but we're not going to, we're not going to get the attaboys. Except for the astute people that follow this, we're not going to get the attaboys because you're not going to see the taxation come in from the stuff we're approving this term. We will lucky to see it next term, but it is coming. So, we're on the right trajectory. If we can just keep our foot, you know, ride the brakes on the tax increases the best we can, not cut the services. Make sure we have the right staff in the right places, doing the right job. All the thing, all the tough decisions we'll be making, many of which are behind closed doors and in camera, which the public never gets to know about. We've had to make some really tough decisions this term and will continue to. But we are doing that and that is reflective. So when you look at this forecast, as councillor Meredith is keenly looking at, these numbers are scary and unfunded as of yet. We're counting on that growth and that we know the growth is coming because the developers are coming and they're wanting, there's massive subdivisions approved. And they will build this stuff. But we're just not going to be able to put it, we can't really put it into a budget document to project this growth and the revenues. Because it hasn't been realized yet. It wouldn't be fair to do that. It would be, we'd be making it up. So, these are big scary numbers, but let's keep it in perspective. We've got so much money in grants, there's no reason to believe that's not going to continue. And growth is coming. And that will be our savior. So we just need to sustain growth.
Councillor Meredith.
And I hope, thank you Deputy Mayor Prost, and I hope that'll be our savior. But in the past, you know, we, when we look at Bayport development, thirty years there, they've had some great, great periods to, to get that thing done. Enhance it. So, that's the scary thing about these developers, right? They just stall because they're doing some other project somewhere else and they can't get, you know, and then all of a sudden, the economy goes down and they jump ship. So that's not his thing to look at. It's scary, right? So, don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot here. So we need growth. I totally get it. You know, we've been stagnant for, for a long time. So, and I hope shovels get in the ground and I hope Midland Bay Landing gets going. And, and then we'll all be sitting pretty. But to be, to be really. No, not at all, or next year. It's going to take a bit. But I, I hope when it comes to fruition, I'm still Midland resident and still here, so on this side of the ground. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more hands up. Council, you've heard the motion? All in favor? It's unanimous, that's carried. Okay, moving forward to twelve point five. CSR dash twenty twenty five dash one oh nine, notice of intent to designate eight historic properties. This is a recommendation report. I'll get a, before I open it up for a discussion, I'll get a mover and a seconder and read the motion. Councillor East and Councillor Bald. But staff report CSR dash twenty twenty five dash one oh nine, notice of intent to designate eight historic properties. Recommendation report dated November fifth, twenty twenty five be received. And the staff be directed to issue a notice of intent to designate for property identified in attachment one of staff report. CSR dash twenty twenty five dash one oh nine pursuant to section twenty nine of the Ontario Heritage Act, RSO nineteen ninety. C oh one eight. So I'm going to open the floor for any discussion on this report. Councillor Major pulled this, so there you go.
So I guess I got to ask the staff, I, I've, I've done some research on this. I talked to some contractors. Retired. Other municipality town employees, whatever. So do, do they have to sign up to be heritage homes? Because I remember, I think it was two or three years ago, the Heritage Committee went from Young. Up to the Santa Taff on King Street and not one house signed up. It's like, yep, Jack, please, I'm out of here. So, and I talked to one guy and he said, when he was in business, if he had to work on a heritage home, he wouldn't go get the permits. The homeowner had to because it was just too much bureaucracy and red tape. And I talked to another contractor that did heritage homework in another town. And he said, some of the places, they'll do the front of the house has to be heritage. And then they can do it, like if they want a new kitchen window at the back or whatever, like they don't have to go to the committee all the time. And the other thing is if you're, you could end up someone not wanting to buy your house because it's heritage. They might want to buy that house, but they don't want to. Buy into a heritage home.
Does anybody on staff have any answers?
Through you Deputy Mayor Prost to councillor major. So. Municipalities can designate heritage properties without owner consent. So property owners do not, are not required to give their consent. However, to try to mitigate conflict, that's why we went out to let property owners know that your property was evaluated. And you did meet the criteria for evaluation and please get in touch with me if you have questions and concerns. And as at those times where some property owners let me know that they did have concerns and I noted those concerns in the staff report. However, the bylaws themselves are what dictate what is a heritage resource or heritage attribute. So in some cases, it is the brick, some case it is, it is the window. But it's not universal that it is the entire outside of the building. That you can't touch. Sometimes it'll be specific to the fieldstone foundation. Sometimes it's specific to the brick. And most of the designations that we're working forward are in the exterior of a building. So we're looking to preserve the shape of the roof. We're looking to preserve the, the exterior brick and the use of red brick in most cases. And not in all cases because some properties are not all red bricks. So it is those kinds of things that property owners, if these properties are designated, would go through a heritage permit for. And the intent is not to prevent people from maintaining their properties. We want these properties to be maintained over a long term to, so they continue to be communities' cultural heritage resources. So not saying no to things, it's more of a different kind of process. But it's not a universal thing. It's, it's specific to each property.
The only thing is, is for me, is if it was a contractor or someone like up to date, going around to see what had to be done. But if it's a bunch of busybodies going around and, and dictating, I would not want to be, have a heritage home, not even maybe. It's just, you're just putting someone into, into bureaucracy and red tape and it's. To me, it's like, I don't think the town has the right to, to go to someone at their house and, and say it's a heritage home. And I still get back to, you go to sell it, I might want to buy that house. You go to sell it. I might want to buy that house so bad and then I find out it's a heritage home and I'm not buying it. So you're putting the the homeowner to me. I just, I I don't think it's fair. Like the guy didn't buy the house knowing it was a heritage home. He bought the house because that's the house he wanted.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Okay, I I need some clarification because these homes are already on our registry. So the way that this was presented to us is that Doug Ford made this new rule department, whatever you want to call it. Uh, that we now had to label our homes that are already labeled to the province. Um, so what is the difference? Because my understanding is that all of this that Counselor Major is expressing. Already exists on our own platform. We're already having these as heritage homes. So what is the difference that they're now classified? Because as it was presented to us, nothing was really changing aside from this random title the province needed.
Uh, through Deputy um, Mayor Prost to Counselor Ball. So we do have a municipal heritage register. On that register are two types of properties listed and designated. Designated properties are protected under provincial legislation and have a designated bylaw registered on title. So that anybody who does a title search, you can find that bylaw regulated. In that bylaw, it'll say that these are the following heritage attributes. And I'll pick on the church just next door because they're looking at doing some work and in their bylaw, it says the southeast and west facades are the heritage attributes. That's all it says. Um, and it actually speaks to some of these stained glass windows being heritage attributes. So if you're looking to do anything else, doesn't involve the town. Listed properties were essentially part properties that were parked. On our register for potential designation at some point or evaluation for designation. Uh, what ended up happening is that these um. Registered became parking lots where properties were just stacked and they were not making their way through the evaluation process. So what the Ford government did essentially was force municipalities to stop doing that and look at your listed uh, properties. Evaluate them and if they're not going for evaluation, you remove them. Because even listed properties have to go through that in um. A review process. There's a sixty day review window on demolitions and every building permit for a listed property has to be reviewed by the planning department. So hopefully that clarifies.
So these homes are already doing that then?
They are currently on our municipal heritage register as listed properties and we're working towards designation. Under provincial legislation.
Okay, but we were already holding them to that standard. You're saying anyways of a review period of sixty days? So nothing really would change with them being designated by the province. If we're already holding them to that standard anyways?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Ball, it, the difference is that there's no nothing registered on title for listed properties. Uh, there's, there's a sixty day review period, but after that's over, the permits have to be issued. We can't stop anything. Whereas with a heritage designated property, you have to go to council. If you're, if you're altering a designated resource or attribute. And Heritage Committee looks at it and then they give their approval and then it moves forward as part of a regular building permit process. But those permits can be denied by the Heritage Committee or we can request changes and things like that. So there's a bit more oversight. I would say there's one more additional step, you or Heritage Committee and. For designated properties.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mayor Gordon.
Yeah, so I remember as a counselor last term, I was approached by a house on King Street where the. You know, they were listed, not designated, I think, and they were very concerned about this. So at the time, uh, it wasn't really explained well to our council by the people we had working for us then that only parts of the house can be declared. It's not like the whole thing. So I I actually don't know what happened with that, whether it was ever challenged or what happened. Because that person, I think they sold the house or trying to do renovations or something, but that there's a. If you let. These heritage homes in your community vanish or let people buy them and knock them down and build McMansions. There, all of the history of your community in these in these old type homes, all this architecture vanishes. There has to be some protections. So I mean, this isn't something where we're, you know, waving the wand and designated half the town, you know. That very specific criteria were met by the by the committee to make sure that these make sense and to to. To your point, Mr. Wismann, the provinces basically said, you know, fisher cut bait. Like enough with just letting these things linger. Either they qualify or they don't. So decide, right? Clean up this list. Which I think makes sense because it was easy for. You know, municipalities, if you stuck in that sort of analysis paralysis where it kind of qualifies, but we're not ready to fully designate because we don't want to to make the homeowner mad. Like it was really quite an easy way out for for politicians. But now they're asking us to actually decide, is this worthy of protection? Do we care that our our community could lose its its cultural, physical heritage in in these buildings? Or are they worthy of protection? And if they are, what is, what's the criteria? Well, we have the criteria and we've identified. A small number of houses out of the thousands in our community that are deserving of that. And homeowners are, you know, it's written in the report eligible. To for designated properties could qualify for a forty percent reduction in their municipal portion of their property tax, as well as education and school board taxes are also reduced. So as much as your insurance may go up a bit and you may not be able to, you know, rip down the gingerbread that's around your your roof. You have to replace it if when it starts to rot and fall down, which it will. Uh, there's significant rebates from the municipality. So we're not just. You know, taking something from you, we're giving you something back as well. To help offset some of the those challenges. If you want to make the inside as modern as can be, fill your boots. This has nothing to do with what's inside. It's just about the identifiable portions, which could be a roof line. It could be the gingerbread. It could be the. The hundred century door, you know, the doorway, entranceway porch just means you couldn't get rid of that. You don't have to use it. You can still go in through the side door or the back door, but that, you know, is being designated as heritage. The porch might be the actual wraparound porch on some of these homes. And you see that, funny enough, a lot, these homes typically get bought by businesses. Businesses love these things. Like, look at how many of our big gargantuan heritage homes along King Street aren't residential anymore. Their law offices, their dentistry offices, their, you know, all kinds of things. So they're, they have uh, value. The big one that's just behind the town here that just sold. You know, that's that move from, well, it's been commercial for a while, but that was someone's big honkin' house. I don't know how you'd pay to heat that thing anymore. But the businesses see the value in it and they and some of them like Dragonsfly. Um, you know, the Airbnb, but the uh, the B and B, the Dragonfly Inn, like absolutely stunningly gorgeous. Like they bought it for that reason and they preserve it and Amanda, they have done so amazing decoration and and preservation in there. So. There's a, as much as part of me feels like, oh, this is an overreach. It's the municipality, you know, dictating and taking away private property rights, which are very near and dear to me. I really believe in those principles. It has to be balanced against the the actual cultural heritage, the architectural heritage of our community. We can't let that go because once it's gone, it's never replaced. There aren't even artisans that can build some of these stonework. Buildings anymore or they're they're a dying trade. So. I'll say eighty percent of me. Sides with this. It makes sense to do. There's still twenty percent that feels like, ah, you know, we're, we're, it's an overreach of the government, but if if the government doesn't protect the cultural heritage assets of our town, who will? And certainly you can't leave it just to the wild. Because you know, with developers and people that buy and remodel won't care. They're not from here. They just bought the place. So I I support the recommendation here and I'm prepared to sit down if if it ever needs to happen. With any of the addresses that are impacted, if they really want to make a case as to why they shouldn't be uh, you know, made to be uh, or they want to debate the issue. There's a process for that with the with the staff. Um, and ultimately, of course, these things will come to council. So we'll have an opportunity, but. This, this feels like the right thing to do for the preservation of the architectural heritage of our community. Because we already seen how much changes happened. Dollar Town, other places where these old homes, although they weren't, you know, uh. Big sprawling manors in their day, they made up the fabric of that Dollar Town and we've seen a lot of them just bulldozed. And we're going to lose these things if we don't take some steps to protect them. So that's just my thoughts on it. I I'm of two minds, but like eighty, twenty and I eighty percent of me. Says, you know, we need to protect this stuff because when it's gone, it's gone.
We have Counselor Meritus, then Counselor Major, then Counselor Ball.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Um, so. Just a quick question here. So the notice of ten. Intent is going to go out. They're gonna uh, respond to to that. And it'll be in your report if they are. Want to go with the natural heritage or not, and then we can decide from there. So it's coming back to council. Uh, correct?
Uh, through Deputy Reprost to Counselor Meritus, correct. We are not making a decision about designation. We are making a decision about starting the process. So everybody will get a certified um, notice from the town saying this is what we're doing. Here is how you can get involved. And with, we have to make decision or council has to make a decision within a hundred and twenty days of that notice being posted.
And thank you. And have you had any initial pushback from any of these properties right right now?
Uh, we, I spoke to a couple uh, through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Meritus, like I said in my report. Those are the concerns that were expressed so far. I don't want to pick out any specific property owner. But it's about uh. Speaking to things that um, are commonly. You know, um, known by just general public that um, their concern about losing ability to do things to their property and. I try to explain to people that it is not a universal lockdown. You can't do anything. And we will work with people if you're trying to do things to your property. Um, and you're concerned about a bylaw going into effect, well, maybe we can wait on that designation so you can finish your work. Or if you're, you know, in the midst of a sale and you're concerned about it falling through. Um, that's, you know, we can work with property owners to make sure that their concerns are addressed. We can even tailor the bylaws to make sure that the bulk of the property is protected over a long term. If they are concerned about one particular thing. Then there's flexibility in how to get to protecting those properties.
Counselor Major.
I still get back to to my biggest thing. Is yeah, I want to see the homes preserved. But if the ones on the committee have haven't got a clue. And they're telling me what I can do with my home, I I could understand if it's a retired contractor or someone that was in the trades. And they go, here's what you got to do. But if it's just some busybody blowing through my house telling me, well, you're not putting a window here. Because I, it it's just, that's the part that scares me. Is who's on the committee and what qual qualifications have they got?
Counselor Ball.
Thanks. And my question was answered. I just want to make sure that we are having a conversation with the homeowners before we designated it fully. So I'm glad it's coming back.
Last one, Mayor Gordon.
Sorry, I just, I just want to. Busybodies, I just. It was difficult to stand up our heritage committee. It's a really thankless committee and we had a really hard time staffing it with people who do care. So I just. I mean, I I know you don't mean this disrespectfully, but I think honestly, if Renee Haxter and the rest of the committee were to hear you, you know, writing off their experience and passion as just a bunch of busybodies. They might be offended and all quit. So if you're listening to me out there, please don't. Um, I think Counselor Major, you know, meant this. Uh, maybe, maybe I'll let you explain how you meant it, but these these people genuinely care and they're not applying their own thoughts to this process. They're using. A prescribed process from the province and they're interpreting it. So I I just don't want to, you know, devalue the the effort of the Heritage Committee who's worked really hard. Uh, on some, doing something that. That was forced upon them. We basically had to have a heritage committee because of this. They've done all kinds of other cool things like Dollar Town signage and they're still working on other things, but. We had to have a committee to do this. So I just, I don't want to disrespect the time and effort of the people who joined the committee or the past members because they're. The, they're not just going around looking for ways to make people's life miserable. Sorry. And one more thing. The five thirty-nine Hugo Avenue, which is the old former Knox Church. Pretty clear, that's a heritage building. Now it's changed hand a couple of times. I don't know what it current status is. Uh, it's no longer a church, so it's paying big taxes, uh, you know, because it doesn't pay taxes as a church. So I don't know. Because it's not in here, what parts or all of that building has been declared heritage worthy? I mean, one could argue the whole thing is, but if it's ever going to be anything else, because it's not going to be a church anymore. Uh, and there, let's say there could be a a spot for a little apartment building. You know. The part, and I I think actually one of the guys that was going to buy it had approached me about this before I even knew about this heritage thing. And I told him, this feels like a heritage building. It isn't, but it feels like one. So that maybe if you are going to buy it and knocks it down, as I jokingly said, uh, then you would consider keeping some portions of it, maybe the the staircase and the entranceways. And building that into whatever your building is to pay homage to the character and um, of that property, even though there'd be something new built. You know, so that blending of the old and new. I'm just, I don't know with that one property, I'm just picking it out because I don't think there's a person uh, that would be offended by us talking about that one particular property. Do we know what parts of it qualified and could something like what I just suggested, where a piece of that architecture remains while the rest of it is, you know, rubble? Could it be built into something that's a hybrid of what was and what will be? Is that something that's still possible once it has a heritage designation?
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Mayor Gordon, um, there's definitely abilities to amend these bylaws. So if. Um, a portion of this to be was to be undesignated, there is a process to do that and to integrate a historic building within something new. Um, so there is ways to work into that. I can't say that I'm a hundred percent know all the details about which one I. Which attributes about that building have been identified. I'm currently looking through the report because we presented it a couple of months ago. But it's not just the uh, physical aspects of this building in particular. This building has contextual and associative value. Because it goes back to the foundation of the community. There was events at this location that were significant to the community and its foundation. So um, there's other ways to to commemorate buildings. Um, but it certainly does have a physical value as well and that it's a unique property and a landmark as well.
Thanks. So that ability to work with the homeowner around a creative new use. To me, now knocks me up to like ninety percent from eighty percent because. I can see the value in needing to do something with that building other than, you know, it can't really be a church or maybe it could be, but I mean, look at congregations these days. Some churches are thriving, other ones are just. So what else could be done without just leaving that building to decay? You know, right in the heart of our downtown. So this is giving me a bit more of a good feeling about this. If we can work on some type of hybrid preservation. You see this all the time in Toronto. Where you'll see an empty lot and all the machines working, putting those piles in, but they've propped up and maintained a a steeple or something. And you can tell it's being protected from all the crazy. Heavy machinery work that's happening around it and then they build it into the new building. Uh, you know, places like Ottawa, you actually have the old bank inside the new bank, like physically inside of it. And Toronto as well, TD, I think, is, you know, down there in the financial district. So there there's some really neat things that can be done. And so I just. Maybe just plant that seed with council that this isn't like a death sentence for somebody that has a house that's designated. It just means that. You know, they should be quite proud of this this house. There are is some extra steps, but if there really is something fundamentally want to do. We can still, as a council, obviously not this council, be some iteration of us. Can still work with them in future years. So that's good to hear because I just think of Knox specifically and just how cool it is, but you know, realistically, is it going to stay? In its current form factor forever and only if it's left to decay.
Counselor Major, you had a follow up and then Counselor.
Yeah, I guess I better uh, rephrase what I said, but. Um. I'm just not comfortable with the whole thing and that's my own personal opinion. And. Good luck to the committee.
Counselor Patel, and then we'll call the vote.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to comment on. This heritage initiative we're taking. It's, it's really a benefit to have. The Heritage Committee and um, address these homes to be part of the. The Midland Heritage because I mean, you look at other parts of the world, they have entire blocks of heritage. I guess houses or buildings. And that's what draws, you know, people to that, those those cities, not just tourism, but people to live there. I know personally myself, uh, friends of mine moved to Toronto from Toronto and bought, it's not a heritage home, but because. Of its characteristics. And what what that home offers, but I also have spoken to many other people that. Were moving to this area because of my business. I I get to talk to. People buying houses and they're moving up and I'm just part of their journey. And they're looking for homes that are historical in uh, in this. You know, uh, what Midland has built in the past. For the homeowner, it's a financial benefit in many ways. I mean, you look at forty percent discount to the property tax and all the grants they would receive. It's a significant amount of money that would offset even the resale if they were to stay in that home for ten years. So I'm in agreement with moving forward with this, thank you.
Okay, this report was actually to be received for information. But we've had a lot of good discussion, and I'm calling the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Let's carry it. So thirteen notices of motion, do we have any notices of motion this evening? Seeing none. Fifteen, motion to close, oh no, sorry, I went from thirteen to fifteen. Fourteen, general announcements, does anybody have general announcements? Councillor Ball.
Thank you, I'm not sure if anyone's been following, Mayor Gordon has been sharing that we got eight new warming spots at the shelter. They are looking for pillows and blankets. I dropped them off the other day, I'm not sure if they're still looking for them, but I'm sure that they would appreciate them either way. Sure, there's never a shortage of pillows and blankets there, there always is a shortage, sorry. So if anyone can drop a pillow and blanket off, they can just go up, knock, they'll answer, and you can be in and out in five minutes.
Mayor Gordon, you must have an announcement.
Always good for a couple. Just a quick reminder to those who like to visit our town office, we love to have you and host you at our front glass. But we will be closing the office next week from nine AM to eleven AM. On, what's the date, for the holiday breakfast? The what? The fourteenth, the fourteenth. So just from nine till eleven, we're having a little breakfast. We're not having a, any gala dinner for our staff for the holidays, but we're doing a breakfast. So nine to eleven, the doors will be closed. This is more for one particular resident, I think, who, just as Murphy's Law would have it, would come to the office that day that we're closed. So we're making sure in a bunch of caution, everybody knows, we'll post it on our news, it'll be on our social media. And I'm saying it is an announcement that we have our little holiday breakfast for staff, and the office will be closed from nine to eleven. And we're happy to host you at eleven oh one. Doors will slide open.
Question in regards to, is the flag raising going to be delayed or still happen at the same time?
Live checking the calendar, because we do have no shortage of events. So the holiday breakfast, I'm coming back for that. So this is a weird one. I'm gonna do welcome, welcome the staff, and then I'm gonna be coming back with the key. And solo, unless you want to, any staff, and of course, the council wants to join me. I'm gonna actually operate the flag mast thing, and we're gonna do the flag raising myself, like for the kettle campaign. Because we couldn't move that, there's too many moving parts for Salvation Army. So we're still doing it. But our staff will be, you know, enjoying breakfast, and I will be there raising the flag and tapping my card and doing what we do every year to kick off kettle campaign. And hopefully you'll be there to join us, unless you're gonna be at the breakfast too. And the next thing, of course, is we are fast approaching Remembrance Day at our Senataf. We actually have two different events, I'll be heading over to Christian Island on the eighth to present for the Indigenous Veterans Remembrance Day Celebration. So I'll be over there from ten until two, and then scooting back for the volley party. So it's a busy day, but that's happening, and I'm also presenting the wreath, not only for the town of Midland, but also from the province of Ontario. So I'm doing double duty. And then please, everybody come out to our Senataf on Tuesday, the eleventh. Make sure you, it's rain or shine, usually fall weather, that's kind of the way it usually rolls. Might even snow, I think, based on the forecast, but so come dressed accordingly. But it's always great to see the youth and the cadets are there, and there's always a good turnout. So please, super important, be there for ten forty-five. Things start ten forty-five sharp, if you want a good spot, get there at ten thirty. And as well, we also have a dinner at the Legion later that evening. So Remember, Remembrance Day, November eleventh, super important, lest we forget.
Councillor Patel.
Thank you, Chair, so just like Mayor Gordon, I have a couple of announcements. Number one, I guess it's Remembrance Days coming up. And I'll be attending that, just like last year. One big announcement I like to make is Canada Post is commemorating the Sikh soldiers that fought during the two wars. Two hundred and fifty thousand soldiers fought the Sikh soldiers from India. Fought the war, and that is why it's on the postage. It shows the sacrifices that many countries made during the war. That when it, when we think about the war, we think about it's the, it's the Western countries. It was not just the Western countries, it was countries from all over the world. And this stamp recognizes the sacrifices made by the Indian soldiers. And I'm, I'm proud to say that I'm honored that it's being recognized. Because India was the part of British colony, it was a Commonwealth country. And that is why the Indian community that's immigrated into Canada has easily integrated as Canadians. Because we come from that Commonwealth mindset. Second thing is, a third, I guess, on the flag lowering happening Monday, I will be honored to lower the flag. Because Mayor Gordon is not able to make it. And the fourth thing is the Diwali celebration that is happening this Saturday. It's in the fifth year, and because of the community grants, the community is able to continue the traditions that's been happening in Midland for five years now. And it will continue to happen long as the Indian community is in Midland, thank you.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, a couple of quick announcements, November twenty first is the BIA tree lighting downtown Midland, six PM. It'll be advertised on website. Am I seeing again? I'm hopefully gonna be there. But I'm sure you're gonna be there, Mayor Gordon, if you haven't got the invite yet, but mark it on your calendar. And then the day after, it's a week earlier this year, is Santa Claus Parade. November twenty second, it's coming quick, so it is moved up a week from last year's because of the Silver Stick Tournament. I think we had some, some issues with safety issues and parking and so forth. So it is on the twenty second, a little bit earlier. So the BIA has, is in a mad scramble. And the town, because the town now, the Remembrance Day has to get, right after Remembrance Day, it's Christmas mode. So it's a short window, so town staff are working hard with the BIA to get the downtown ready for Christmas after, you know, Remembrance Day. So a lot of things happening in the tail end of November, and hope to see everybody there.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, it's moved by councillor major and seconded by myself. But the committee of the whole rise and report, all in favor? In advance, that's carried. There you go, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, I got a motion here moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Patel. The recommendation is the committee of the whole for the meeting of November fifth, twenty twenty-five be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next, I have, under motions for which notice was given, moved by councillor Ball, I need a secondary get on the floor, councillor East. That staff be directed to investigate ways to improve the town's planning bylaws to ensure high density builds provide adequate parking spaces to accommodate residents who have multiple vehicles and visitor parking spaces. And that a staff report be provided at a future regular meeting of council, take it away councillor Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson and I have been in communication a bunch about this. So there's a way we can make it work, then hopefully there is. I did, we do have limitations by the province. There are ways around that. So the province designates things in transit areas, which we are not. One, we are Midland, we do not live in a high density populace, which has next to a transit station, a rail station. So a lot of their limitations surround that, so we do not live in that. Also, they have limitations when you add a second unit on, we're not allowed to ask for more parking with second units in their building. So that's another driver of this, is a concern that we don't have adequate parking already. And then when people add basement units or they convert their garage into a unit, that eliminates a parking space already. And then we, because our parking spaces are considered a garage, which other municipalities have gone forward. And they have removed the garage as a parking space, and they have done only uncovered spots that are accessible can be deemed a parking space. So we do have the ability within our own bylaws to change so that some of these developments are a little more livable. Because as Mayor Gordon said today, we're approving growth and growth and growth. And I want to make sure it's growth people want to live in, because right now it's not. I get complaints all the time from people who live in these townhouse developments that there's nowhere to park, there's nowhere to put snow, there's nowhere to put their garbage bins, and those are all things that we need to be considered of as a municipality when we're approving these developments. If our bylaws don't reflect anything, then developers can continue to build homes that don't have adequate parking for residents. So there are ways to do it, there are limitations, but none of those limitations that I found from the province actually reflect our community. So there is a way to do it, and I would love to be able to investigate it so that we can have a more livable Midland.
You've evidently seen my two car garage that fits zero cars. Through my own, my own misuse and collecting junk over the years, anyway. Mr. Ferguson, did you have, I know we had a brief sidebar about the zoning bylaw exercise that's coming up next year. And it might be a good time to talk about that to see whether that's a suitable mechanism. Or, you know, if this is something that would make sense to report on before that bylaw comes to us.
Thank you, Worship, so yes, we're, we've got the new zoning bylaw that we're looking to start next year. We have one last appeal to the official plan that we're trying to get resolved. And once that's in full force and effect, that's when you typically would then have your zoning bylaw started. So we can start that process, however, new zoning bylaws do take some time to complete. So if council is wanting us to proceed with only changing this standard, it would be a regular process similar to what we did for housekeeping. Where you would have to do a public meeting, we'd have to give circulation to the public that we're doing a townwide review of the parking standards. We would have a public meeting, and then we would then report back to council, and then all the appeal periods. And that's, we do open ourselves up that we could potentially get an appeal as well from, from, from the public, from many of the developers. So we're at the will of council, if they, if they would like for us to, to come back and start that process outside of the, the new zoning bylaw. What I'd recommend is that we do some investigation and come back with some standards. And then council can tell us if they want us to proceed formally with, with updating the zoning bylaw on that, on updated standard. So my recommendation would be to hold off, but I understand the, the concern that, you know, it does take some time to draft those new zoning bylaws to come in full force and effect. And, you know, it could take us two years, possibly to draft a new zoning bylaw, and then at the end of the, we get an appeal. So, and then it's delayed if people, if people do appeal the parking standard. So, but we're at the will of council, we will provide whatever information forward that council requests.
And just to clarify, we will get pushback from developers, but that doesn't mean that we are within our rights as a municipality to change the parking standards, lots of municipalities have done it. So obviously, developers are going to push back, they want to make the most amount of money they can. But that doesn't mean that they would win any appeal, because we are well within our standards to change the parking bylaws.
So the question is, do we want to have staff do this now or wait till next year when the zoning bylaw review process begins, which includes many, many, many components, including parking?
I do not want to approve any more developments under this parking. And we have more coming that we know are coming, and we know they're high density. And we know that we are just continuing to approve places people don't want to live. And that's not a Midland that I want to live in, and it's not a Midland I want to see happen. So I don't want to put my name on any more developments that have this. So I would like this part of it reviewed before, because it is, like Mr. Ferguson said, a long process. And if we're waiting another year just to start it, we're going to, we're going to approve all these developments.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, yeah, I would have to agree with councillor Ball. The sooner we get to this, because I don't want to approve high density developments. With, you know, I'm looking at the snow load we got last year, some of the subdivisions that were high density. It was, it was just a mess and safety issues and so forth. So if there's developments coming down, down the way that, you know, down the pipe in the next year that we have to develop, approve. Unfortunately, if it's high density, and we have this parking issue, and it's there, I, you know, however, you know, the development looks, if it looks attractive, if it doesn't have the parking this in it, then I'm gonna have to not approve it. Just don't want to go through what we did last year with the snow load we got. I know it might have been a one off, but we're still, we're still in the snow belt. So, and again, it's not the community I want to live in as well. So developers, you know, they make concessions. So hopefully, you know, they'll, they won't appeal this, and because if they appeal, they're only after one thing, right? They're not in the interest of Midland, they're in the interest of their pockets. So I would like to move forward with this, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that if we do not change this parking bylaw, we cannot deny development based off of parking. The only way we can do that is if this is changed. So just throwing that out there.
Councillor Patel.
Thank you, Worship, I have a question for staff. Let's say we go ahead with this motion and put the bylaw in process. Can the builder or developer can appeal to the OLT? And we can potentially lose and lose a whole bunch of money, thank you.
Through your worship, anytime you amend the zoning bylaw, standards, permitted uses, it is subject to an appeal. So yes, they could appeal to the Unterrland Tribunal, and you have a fifty fifty chance. Yeah, the winner he loses, so yes, we could, we could see an appeal on that standard, and we could see an appeal from multiple people. Or it could go through without any appeals.
Just a follow up, so thank you for that information. I think we're all aware that Doug Ford wants to build ten million homes. So that fifty fifty looks like zero one hundred. So based on that information, I understand where councillor Ball is coming from, but we will lose that appeal when that comes. Thank you.
We are not going to lose an appeal, because other municipalities have different standards of this. We are at the low end of parking requirements.
So I think what can come in this, in this report could be, how many of our current developments that are in the pipeline would be impacted by this change? Because, you know, not all of them are high density. And, you know, what areas of the town do we not have any real leeway in, if any? I know we have made changes for the downtown core. So a report back that kind of gives us the lay of the land, what changes would be permitted under the province? What changes would be risky? We can still accept that, though. And what, if any, current developments in the pipeline would be impacted by this change? Because, you know, like with the one on Bond Beach Road and Young Street, are those high density? I don't really think so, but they could be, I mean, they've got two apartment blocks, but they also seem to have a fair bit of parking in it. So we need to know how many are impacted. And then, as part of this process, of course, we'd be engaging with the public, because we have to. But we could also talk to those developers, because But we could also talk to those developers because they haven't hit site plan yet, right? And say, guys, here's the, here's the changes we're contemplating making is it's a showstopper for you. So we could probably get ahead of an appeal by working with them. The ones, the one specifically that sticks out in my mind is Hanson, right? That's the elephant in the room. You know, they've been evasive all term, getting back to us. And then we finally get them to answer emails and they're threatening legal on us. So, you know, they, they've got, you know, their plans, if you look, if, if they're going to continue on their current build process, that is like the most ridiculous design ever with the way people have to park in there. And, you know, if, if they don't change their design for, if they ever decide to get back to building in Midland, then I can see us having an absolute nightmare in there. If, because right now it's just a small pocket of homes. If you replicate the thousands more that are, were originally approved in there, this change could be a big deal. That might be another reason why they want to take us to court to make this change, but so be it. So I, I would like to know how this impacts the current things, things in the pipeline and then the ones that are stalled. Because that Hanson seasons on the lake expires next year. And this council, before we evaporate, will have the opportunity to let it expire and force them to come back to the table with new rules and parameters on it. If they ever decide they want to build in Midland. So I, I can see the merit in doing this now. Knowing that it's, we're not really duplicating the effort in the zoning bylaw review because I'm curious as to what our planners say is reasonable. They can do that sort of environmental scan of other municipalities that have made changes that are better. You know, in many of our opinions than what we have now and what the risk is to our current developers that are in the pipeline. And we don't have to worry about risk for future because that will be, that's the future. We don't know about that. We can't be afraid of the future. But I just don't want to, I don't want to wreck things that are in the pipeline. So would that, is that a reasonable expectation, Mr. Ferguson? That's the kind of substance that would come back in this report? Not only what we can do, but how it would potentially impact current things in the planning process. You know about a lot of things that are, we don't even know about yet.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing is that even if council changes the standard, developers can still come in and apply it as part of a ZBA, a zoning bylaw amendment to change the parking standard again. There used to be, uh, in the Planning Act that once council amended a bylaw provision, it was basically like a freeze. You couldn't amend it for two years. Provisional government got rid of that. So you could apply, you could change the zoning, we could change the zoning and then the next week they can come in and apply for an amendment to, to change that standard. So, you know, the intent of the two-year freeze was to let that provision settle, let it get some roots before it gets amended. So, and I think if, if staff is to report back, we need to know what, is it high, hi- high density? Is it, is it medium density? Is it, is it singles? Is it towns? Is it blocks? Like, we need to know the built form that, that council wants us to, to look at because the parking standard that we may propose, that we may think is appropriate, will be different for each type of built form, whether it's a street town home, which has the driveways that access a public road compared to a block town home, which is accessed by a private driveway that goes in behind. So there's different types of built forms. And this is why when we go through the zoning bylaw process, we look at all of that at once when we're doing a new zoning bylaw. So there will probably need to be a little bit more direction in terms of if you just say you want us to look at medium and high density. Okay, we can narrow that down. We know that single detached dwellings are not, are not those types of built forms. So the medium density, you, you'd be looking at your towns, your block, your street, uh, maybe four plexes, those types of multi-use buildings. And then, uh, even though the one on, on Young is three stories, you know, that starts to creep up out of medium density into maybe, you know, high density, a low end of high density. And then, you know, the redevelopment at 1191 Harborview, that's high density. We got two towers. So, you know, if, if, if you tell us medium and high density, we can then narrow it down. If that makes sense to council.
Okay. So then there's another factor in there is that if we move towards, you know, enhancing our transit system, the innate requirement for, you know, a person with a house to have two cars, really, you know, this is a buying decision people make to consciously have this. And in today's economy, quite frankly, everyone can afford cars. If you live on a transit route, as we currently have with fixed routes like on Young Street, then a requirement to have a car is less than if you live in the, you know, the boonies. If you live in Middle Point Road or something where you're not getting anywhere in our current transit scenario. But with on-demand microtransit, that really changes the balance. Then you have to look to it, little miss, little, think of Cook Drive subdivision where, you know, it, you're hard pressed to park on your, your driveway depending what car you choose to buy. Again, this is personal choice. My big one F, F 150 is 20 feet long. If I bought a house on or rented a house on Cook Drive, I would be parked over the sidewalk. So I'd be getting a ticket every day. So, you know, do we change the zoning bylaw to accommodate the fact that I just like to drive a big honky truck in the winter time? Or do I make buying and renting decisions based on the fact that I happen to like the big vehicle in our, I have two vehicles. I have three, you know, like, we can't, we have to be careful not to be too restrictive around our personal choices. And because now we're imposing on, on everybody else. People need to take responsibility too for the kind of house they buy. Or, you know, I get they buy what they can afford, but they need to understand that if you're going to buy a place where your vehicle hangs over the, the sidewalk, you, you're getting ticketed and you can't come to the town and ask us to change the zoning bylaw to allow for different parking or put more other parking in the subdivision just because of personal choices. So I think we've got to be careful on that slippery slope too, that we don't apply a one-size-fits-all brush to everybody because, you know, that, that just never works out in planning. And typically that kind of totalitarian authoritarian planning stuff is the, is famously struck down at the OLT. Especially, you know, with the current, uh, you know, government that's going on right now.
I think that's speaking from a place of privilege because people are only able to rent the homes that are rentable. And what's being rented right now are those townhomes on Cook Drive. And those people own businesses where they have to have a truck in order to do construction businesses, trade businesses. Those people have to have that. It's not a choice. It's their livelihood. And now they are also getting ticketed. That is happening there. They're getting ticketed for not being able to fit their car in a driveway. So why on earth would we approve something knowing that we live in a very large climate that has a lot of trades, a lot of factory workers, a lot of people that require larger vehicles? And then not have them be able to fit in a driveway with, we should not be on the side of of a municipality that approves something where you cannot buy or rent a house where your car won't fit in the driveway. That's honestly, I just think that's ridiculous. That would we even consider that? We're not Toronto, we're Midland. Toronto, it works in. You, people have small cars or no cars. That's not the case here. And a lot of those families have three or four people living in that home. That's multi-generational because of how high the cost of living is right now. That's just facts. So we need to consider what is happening in our community and how we help the people in our community. And I don't think that's having somebody not be able to have a truck for their construction business to not be able to park in the driveway. Like, that just doesn't seem right to me.
Who is next up? Counsel Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I feel your sentiment and, you know, I, I agree with your point of views. But the issue is that it would go to OLT or the amendment would happen and then it would come back to council and then we don't approve it. It goes to OLT. Look at Hanson, like the mayor said, and I've, I've been watching that development. I knew it was going to fail because the way they designed their parking, nobody's buying their homes. Cook Drive, they're rentals. I understand. But if the person's car is not fitting, then they have to move. They, they can rent somewhere else or they have to change, they have to find, you know, somewhere they can pay to park their vehicles. Uh, I remember when I lived in Markham, next door to us, there was a rooming house. They had like eight cars. They, we, we gave them a space for free in our parking, uh, because we had no cars. So there, there's ways that people can make adjustments, uh, because the most important thing is having a roof over your head. A vehicle is a secondary thing, or maybe it's, it's a, it's a third thing. I guess food comes second. But us trying to control how builders build will only make things difficult because you look at in Toronto, they were building investor-grade condos. There's entire buildings that are empty or people who bought them as investments. They can't sell them. They're going bankrupt. So moving forward, builders are going to have to consider these things before they start building these stacked homes and stacked condos and townhouses because people have choices to buy now where that didn't happen a few years ago. So I, I think we have to leave it in the, in the builder's hands to make those decisions and us trying to be their, I guess, father or other is, I think it's a little bit of an overreach. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor and then Counsel McDonald, waiting so patiently at the far end.
Well, Counsel Patel said mostly what I was going to say, um, after listening to Mr. Ferguson. I think it's a lot of staff time and energy if it can be overturned. And it's, it can be changed at any time. So I, I don't think I could vote for it because I think we need to keep our staff focused on on, on the work they already have. I, I just, I'm not ready to give staff more right now.
And just to be clear, we will be talking about this regardless during zoning bylaw. So this is not, it's not like we're saying no to it or that's not your position. Counsel McDonald?
Thank you. I am going to second this motion. Because it's, it's asking to investigate ways to improve. You might come up with one thing that we can make it better and it's in a future report. And why wouldn't we want to try and improve adequate parking spaces? And I'm also asking, calling the vote, please.
Counsel East?
Thank you through your worship. What I was going to say is in regards to Hanson's, you know, obviously these plans came to our planners. If there was rules in place, then we wouldn't have these issues right now, right? So the thing is what we're doing or what Jamie Lee Ball is, Counsel Jamie Lee Ball is doing is she's bringing the problem up to the forefront so that we can control the situations in the future. So as much as I appreciate what everybody's saying about spinning things, what we're doing is we're actually going to be trying to figure out ways to manage parking ahead of time. So if these were in place when developers, they came to our development employees, we could have said, okay, you know what? This isn't going to work. We have to look at parking and then you would be successful at Hanson. Right? So all we're doing is right now is we're saying, okay, let's set a precedence. Let's set some guidelines. And there's nothing the matter with educating and, and, and doing some homework on, on, on guidance. I mean, truthfully, if you want to see Hanson's be successful and if you think it's the parking that's the problem, then why don't we fix it? Help them build houses, right? All we're doing is we're setting a tone of how we want to see parking in Midland. There's nothing wrong with what Counselor Jamie Lee Ball is asking for. So I, I will fully support it.
Any further conversation? Mr. Ferguson, are you clear on what it is? What style of housing, parking? Because you'd mentioned that you weren't quite sure the scope of this, like, maybe ask Counsel Ball if she can define this better? Because you're going to look at it in totality during the zoning bylaw review anyway. But for now, what are, what's the scope of what, what is being asked of you? Are you clear on this? I'm not, but.
Yeah, through your worship and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Ball, I think you're wanting us to look at the medium density and high density built forms?
Yeah, it's mostly attached homes.
Okay. So if it's attached homes, then we're looking, that's medium density. So we're not looking at high density.
So the high, high, sorry. High density are the, the buildings that we're, yeah. I, if we're going to argue this level of what's important, then I would say the townhouse is on the forefront. I would love to see high density looked at, but I think the issues that we have the most are with the townhouse developments and that's what's coming forward for the most part. But obviously all of these are mixed use. So they have these fourplex buildings, which are considered a high density area. So
we can.
We can speak outside of it if you'd rather and narrow it down.
Uh, through your worship, I think what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll look at the triplexes and fourplexes and consider those, um, medium density. And then anything higher than that, we would, we would just roll over. If it's an eightplex, which we don't have, but if we have something like that, we would roll that maybe over to the higher density.
Yes, thank you. I would rather look at, uh, one than the other, if that's the way that this is going, which it seems like it is. So.
You're good. You're clear on it? All right. So all is in favor? Oh, hold on, sorry. Madam Clerk?
Thank you worship. The motion as it's written says, um, high density builds. So perhaps if council agrees, you can add, do a friendly amendment and put medium and high density builds. Just medium, change high to medium.
Is that okay? And the secondary, Counsel McDonald, are you good with that? Okay. So amended, it says that staff be directed to investigate ways to improve the town's planning bylaws to ensure medium density builds provide adequate parking spaces to accommodate adequate parking spaces to accommodate residents who have multiple vehicles and visitor, and visitor parking spaces and that a staff report be provided at a future regular meeting of council. Guys, are you good with that? Okay. Call, oh, Madam Clerk?
Thank you worship. When the motion was first presented, we had, I had Counsel East as a seconder. So I'm not sure why it changed to Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, that was me. Sorry. Cause Counsel McDonald said she liked to second it. So I, I conferred with Counsel East, but I didn't tell you that. So it is, it is now Counsel McDonald who has seconded this motion. Yeah, because I had to get on the floor. So, yeah, anyway, you wanted it, you got it, but I just didn't tell the boss. So now you know. All right. Now let's call the question for heaven's sake. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, there we go. Carried. All right. Next move by Counsel Ball, seconded by Counsel Merrittus, that bylaw 2025 dash 61 being a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy for 2026 and to provide for penalty and interest be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Next move by Counsel Bald, seconded by Counsel Major, that bylaw 2025 dash 62 being a bylaw to opt the proceedings of regular council meeting held today, November 5th, 2025 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Carried. And last but not least, move by Counsel Reese, seconded by Deputy Aprost, this regular meeting of council adjourned at 11:24 PM. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We are adjourned.